Good evening. This is the Tuesday, October 28th Committee of the whole Groton Town Council. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:34. All members are present. Calendar and Communications. Counselor Baumgartner.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Parker.
I received an email regarding the PLA. I'd like to thank Mr. Barrett for reaching out. And I attended Chief Jeff Nixon's retirement. I want to wish him all the best in his next endeavor.
Counselor Franco.
I received the same letter from Mr. Barrett. And I was on vacation, so I have nothing further to report.
Counselor Heath.
I also received a letter from David Barrett. But I also wanted to mention I attended a rally to celebrate the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote. It was a few days ago. That was introduced by Erin A. Sargent. And just to give people an idea of how long things sometimes take to make change, it was 41 years from the time it was introduced in Congress till the time Congress passed it on to the state's for ratification. So it wasn't ratified until August 18th, 1920. So we've had, just had the 98th anniversary.
Counselor Ober.
Ben.
Counselor Atwater.
I met with the chief of the Mystic Fire Department to discuss or help me understand why we have seven fire districts and only two of them provide trash collection. I think maybe the town could do something better there. I'm still going to the teachers' contract meetings. And I had a request from the Children's First Groton Committee that they would like to come and speak to the council to sort of let us know what they do since we do support them. So I wonder, John, if that can go on the future agenda.
So it's Children First Groton?
Children First Groton, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Schmidt.
I did receive the same emails.
And welcome back, Counselor Perry.
Thank you. No report.
Thank you. I received the same email. I attended the Women's Equality Day rally as well. It's a nice celebration with quite a few people out. Attended a meeting with the manager and the town attorney regarding the project labor agreements. And I had an email from a constituent regarding Noant Garden. And I forwarded the questions to Mr. Burt, I believe, last week. And we haven't heard back on those questions yet. So we will give them another week, maybe, to try to get us some answers because there's some detailed questions that we're looking for answers.
Yeah, I'll reach out again.
Thank you very much. Okay, approval of minutes.
So I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Committee of the whole meeting of August 14th, 2018. So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Parker. Any discussion on the minutes?
I have a correction.
Yes.
On the calendar, communications, on the first page, it states that the beautification committee will be meeting on September 10th. And the time is actually at 5:30. And the location is at the Groton Public Library.
Okay, so I'm just going to repeat that because they're doing this from the video. So I'll just repeat what you said and you verify, please. On page one of the meeting minutes of August 14th, there's an error under calendar and communications. The beautification committee should be meeting at 5:30 rather than 5:00.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
And at the public library, not the senior.
So the senior center, Groton Public Library?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or issues with minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. New business. Counselor Parker. Now, this is 2018-224 plastic bag and/or other plastic product reductions. And this is on page nine. No formal action is needed, but if you just would introduce it for the public, please.
Just reading the issue, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Should the town council ask the Conservation Commission to study whether the town should institute a ban on the use of plastic bags and/or other plastic product reduction?
Thank you. And I believe we have a few people, a few members of the Conservation Commission with us this evening as we have asked them to look into this a bit. So would the members of the Conservation Commission, please, come up? Thank you for coming out. When you speak, if you could please use the microphones. We can hear you in the room, but Mr. Greeley needs to capture it for the videotape, please. So if you could just introduce yourselves? Thank you.
My name is Michelle Fitzpatrick.
Larry Dunn.
Thank you. And Counselor Heath, since this was something that you were interested in, would you like to introduce it and talk a little bit about it?
Well, I wrote something up, so I'll just read that. Basically, according to a USA Today article from September 2017, 94 percent of U.S. tap water is contaminated by plastic fibers. According to an NPR article also dated in September 2017, plastics are showing up in our shell fresh. There are a number of articles. These were just two that were easy to find. So most part plastic in southeastern Connecticut is probably disposed of properly and responsibly, either being recycled or ending up at the Preston incinerator where it is probably converted to electricity. However, as someone who walks regularly and picks up plastic trash that are in the streets, I know that a substantial amount also ends up on the streets. And that's the trash that I was kind of looking at. I've been walking probably since 1994, and it's always the same thing. I think there are a lot of bowls. There aren't that many bags, but there's a lot of plastic out there. So currently, we have a carrot and stick approach to combating plastic pollution. The carrots include five cent bottle reception deposit, like the bottle retention fee. And we have curbside recycling programs. And then we have another step which is it's illegal to litter. This approach, it's not necessarily working. Some people continue to disregard both the carrots and the sticks, whether they don't know, they don't care, or there's some other intent. To protect the water and food supplies, I was thinking enough to look at the behavior of what's going on. People are throwing trash out the window of their cars. What are they throwing out? Identified a number of things, the little plastic nip bottles, mostly plastic cups, plastic bottles, straws. I don't really find a bowl of bags. But I'm not sure what, how we would go about doing something like this. Rather than take it on just by the subject, I would have a conversation. I know Stonington is looking into it, so is Waterford. I think they want to do a plastic bag. But my thinking is that we wouldn't want to do something that harms business. So I wouldn't say we get rid of plastic nip bottles, although I think you're probably, there's probably a lot of driving and drinking going on. But what would happen if we got rid of something like that? And as people would go across to the boards and ledgers and Stonington, they want to even bother with the little nets over there, come back and still throw them on our street.
So my thinking was maybe target something like cups from takeout places. Yeah, I'm just not sure how we would want to do this that wouldn't harm business but would have like a measurable impact. I noticed that the Drinking Water Quality Management Plan includes 26 findings and recommendations for the town. Not all of these things have been implemented. But I was kind of looking for your expertise on this to see what we would really want to do.
I guess the, part of the question is, what's the parameters or limits? Because...
Just something small. I think something, you know, that just says, let's try and reduce some of the plastic that's on the streets.
So there are, there are programs. I mean, there's a bill that's been in the Connecticut State Legislature for two years unsigned, right? That limits plastic bags, well, actually provides a fee for plastic bags of 23 cents, I think. That's a tax across the state. Other than that, which wasn't signed, there's only two towns within Connecticut that have passed through the town councils. One, and they're not the same, by the way. And there's a third one pending, which is also not the same. They all have things in concert which are no plastic bags. Paper's okay. Sometimes paper's okay, but you got to pay 23 cents a bag, right? To the store is part of your bill. Another one is 10 cents. Another one is nothing. So there's a couple of questions. The level of consistency with surrounding towns, because as you mentioned earlier, if you do it in town A, right next door to town B, they do something different, how does that affect where people may shop or do other things? The other aspect that I have a question on is that, as a result of doing some, a little research on this, I found out that the town of Groton, town council prior to this town council, asked to be part of the Sustainable Connecticut Municipality Certification Program in 2016. And we were registered in June of 2018. To my knowledge, I don't think we've done anything. Interestingly enough, part of the town council resolution was that the Conservation Commission is responsible for the sustainability plan. And it's the first we have heard about it. I mean, the three of us are actually new to the council. So one of my questions is that the plastic, limit on plastic, to me, is part of, specifically section 7.5 and 7.6, of reducing waste and reducing trash is part of that plan. So it's kind of a two-part question. So do we address this separately? Do we address this part of the sustainability plan, which is already a resolution passed by the town council? And if that's the case, then, you know, we need to enter into the agreement, which is quarterly reviews and a yearly report to the town council on our progress, versus a standalone, separate, plastic bag review. So I'd like to get some feedback from you on what you think the direction should be.
So just to address the sustainability issue, Mr. Burt, part of this, if I recall correctly, was that we're incorporating ongoing projects in the town that qualify us for the sustainability program? And I believe it was part of planning, is that correct?
Yes, it's with the planning department.
So Mr. Reiner is here. So you're not alone. We are doing things on this. And here's Mr. Reiner from planning.
Good evening. Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development. So the Sustainable Connecticut issue is a program for the state. It's not a sustainability plan. It's a program that's, we've applied for, but we haven't gone through all the steps to actually become a sustainable Connecticut community as of yet. That is something that's different than the plastic bag or plastics discussion. That was something that, I believe, in the original referrals, we took that to the town council. It was discussed that we could look to the Conservation Commission as part of that, but a lot of that was going to be driven by an internal staff effort to look at all the programs we have in place, because a lot of the Sustainable Connecticut initiative was based on what a municipality is doing from a programs perspective.
Right. So one of the things that we had back from the Conservation Commission was that you were looking for timeframe, scope, and what the final product was you wanted from the council. So I'm going to go back to Counselor Heath. Did you have ideas for timeframe, scope, and final product?
I don't think there necessarily needs to be a final timeframe. Maybe aim for like six months from now to have something to go forward with. But I don't necessarily think, see, the problem is when I've been researching this, I see a lot of random things that, like you said, several towns have their own, only two in Connecticut, but they have their own programs and nothing meshes. And it's like they do a blanket program such as banning plastic bags. I use plastic bags for my trash. I know a lot of people do that. I don't see, I don't want to punish people, make them have to pay for something that they already, that they're already using responsibly, so to speak. Just, I'm not exactly sure. That's why I'm bringing it to you.
So do you have ideas for any small steps that the town could implement to move us towards his goals?
Well, I think one is you see what other people have done. And so there's been a lot of work done across the country on specifically plastic bag banishment, whatever the right word is, as a separate subpiece, putting the sustainability one together, which we should talk about offline. And in that guise is, I would suggest that if that's the request, we can specifically look at that. My own interpretation of that is that that would go for credit for certification, but that's a separate, separate question. In terms of plastics in general, once you start to broaden it, as you said, is it on the top of the thing, another thing? I think we're getting outside of what is reasonably accomplishable and would be acceptable from, you know, just the public, if you will. Plastic bags certainly can be done.
Well, yeah, I'd like to offer maybe a different opinion. I agree that the plastic bag thing may not be the answer for some of the same reasons. And Mike and I both made the comment, you know, we use them for trash. I have a friend that uses them to pick up her dog poop when she's taking walks. So that's not necessarily the answer. The one other thing that I have heard of is the plastic straw, getting rid of plastic straws. And I know, I taught at Con College last year, and they had, some of the students did a really intense project on getting rid of plastic straw use. And I think they got it in Mystic or something. So that's one possibility to look into is, you know, can we get the plastic straws replaced with paper or get people to buy their own metal ones or whatever? So that's, straws is a possibility. That's already been looked into. The cups, you know, that's a possibility, but I don't know if anyone's, how far anyone's gotten on, on people replacing plastic cups or lids at the fast food type establishments. So we could kind of look into that. But I think we all agree that if you make it too broad, you're, there's no way to accomplish much of anything, especially in a short timeframe. But we could focus on a couple of things and give an answer on what, you know, our opinion is on trying to do certain small things. Does that make sense?
I think that that's where it would be nice to start. You know, like, we know Starbucks is getting rid of straws in the next year. So is Marriott, plastic straws. Just the cups, I think, would be an interesting way to go because I see a lot of Dunkin' Donuts, Cumberland Farms, a lot of these kind of carry in cash, sort of cash and go kind of cups that are on the streets.
Mr. Dunphy, did you want to add anything?
Well, nothing specific. Dunkin' Donuts has, if you get a small coffee, you get a paper cup. If you get a medium or a large, you get a styrofoam cup. Does styrofoam qualify as plastic?
Well, that, I was, yes. I would apply it.
I don't know. Cold drink cups are all plastic.
But you take a restaurant where it's a sit-down restaurant, I don't think we would need to get rid of plastic at a sit-down restaurant. Because, you know, in theory, they're throwing it away. It's not going out the door.
It's not fair to have to make them have two different kinds of cups, one for to-gos and one for eating there. We could ask different vendors, different restaurants, the smaller ones, privately owned, if there's a way that they could go that wouldn't cost them an arm and a leg, and paper straws and paper cups and paper plates. Everybody's got the styrofoam containers that you take your stuff home in. I don't, New Jersey has, for years, had been very tough on littering. And I don't know if the state of Connecticut's got the money to put up a whole bunch of fines for littering, $500 or not, but you ride up and down the highways in New Jersey and you don't see a lot of litter. It's not worth it. We don't have any such law here, not that I know of, anyway. So town in Groton could put up signs, $500 fine for littering. I think it would help. You could also offer a $10 reward for somebody turning in somebody for littering.
Counselor Franco.
I'm just going to jump in. I just thought of this as you were speaking, because I'm not sure which direction we're going in this. But could the Conservation Committee possibly just look at ways to reach out, business outreach with information for businesses that maybe if they changed the type of product they're using, it may, how it impacts?
And that's actually, I was thinking, can we have incentives? Like, you know, make it profitable for a business to make a change? Like, what change could they make? And what can the town offer them in return for making that change? Something like that.
I don't know about coming up with new rules and regulations regarding this. And this wide scope, I think, to begin with, it might be just simply, how about we do business outreach and we come up with, like, exactly what you're looking for? If you're looking for them to change from styrofoam to, you know, to cardboard or for takeout, I don't know. I mean, just things that can impact, you know, marine animals and our water sources and things of that nature, maybe just education of businesses.
And the thing I wanted to add was, perhaps instead of implementing new rules or regulations, we could work on the cleanup aspect of it. There's a young man over in Pawtucket, Toller Heffle, and he's organized this whole thing, Trash Talk Rhode Island. And he's, he's very dynamic. And he motivates a lot of people. And they go out and they do these day-long cleanups. And he's gotten, he has so much energy. And he just brings a new light to it. And perhaps we could work with Toller to start Trash Talk in Groton and, you know, work on that part of it rather than bringing in some new kind of ordinance. Counselor Parker.
I understand talking to businesses, I get that point. How is that going to affect overall? We want to ban straws? As a manufacturer, are we going to be hurting people's businesses and hurting jobs eventually down the line, going this route? I'm just thinking of it as a big, broader scope. We start talking about straws, straws sometimes come in plastic coverings, so are we banning that? How far are we going to go? And who's it going to hurt overall? We don't want to hurt big businesses that are doing this, that are manufacturers of making this stuff, the plastics. Because literally, how far can we go? I just don't know how far we should reach on that. I don't, just a thought.
We have Counselor Atwater, Counselor Baumgartner, Counselor Schmidt, and Counselors of Perry.
I don't know that this really relates exactly to what we're doing, but I saw something on the news a week or so ago called Green to Go Durham, North Carolina. And they've worked out a system with the restaurants where this group are using recycled takeout containers. And they supplied it, supplied them to the restaurant, and the restaurants use them, but that doesn't cost them anything. And then they've made some bins around town that are out of recycled wood where you can throw the container after you've used it. And they've got a couple of volunteers on bicycles that go around and pick them up. And they're really going green with this. And then they bring them back and I guess put them through a process to sterilize them and then deliver them back to the restaurant. And my thinking is if we can do something to raise awareness, rather than trying to solve the problem, just do, whether this is the answer, I don't know, but just, I think to do something to get people thinking, Trash Talk, maybe something is the right idea.
Counselor Baumgartner.
I know Counselor Heath brought up two very important points. One, all trash goes to the Preston incinerator. So regardless, if you're going to be throwing away, you know, any form of plastic cup, a straw, it's going to go to the incinerator. So I think our, my question to the council and certainly to, that we all have to answer is, what do we have to do to encourage folks to actually recycle that product instead of throwing it away in the garbage? And then we can most certainly talk about, you know, whether or not a ban would be appropriate. And I guess my question would be, to styrofoam, whether or not styrofoam at all can be recycled? I don't think it can be, to my knowledge, but if there's been any sort of breakthroughs there where, you know, it's, or examples where that's been done? Because really, that, you know, seems to be the biggest culprit, especially, you know, some of those Dunkin' Donuts cups and whatnot. But I'm very, very much looking forward to working with the commission on this topic.
Counselor Schmidt and Mr. Perry.
I just wanted to point out that at the Big Y in Mystic, and I'm sure the Big Y in Groton, you're able to take back your plastic bags and they recycle them. And I think it's very popular because that container that you can put it in is always full. And it's just a wonderful way of taking care of that problem. And as a matter of fact, I have a bag full of paper, of the plastic bags in my car to return tomorrow. So it's a good way to do that. And then they are recycled and you don't have to even worry about it.
Counselors of Perry.
I'm concerned about considering prohibitions of plastics in Groton. Very often, I'll stop in Stonington and pick up a cup of coffee, or in Stonington's side of Mystic, and pick up a cup of coffee and drive home sipping it into Groton.
On Thomas Road?
On Thomas Road, yes. The thing about it is that you can't control in Groton what is a universal problem. And the controls have to come from jurisdiction that covers wider territory. I enjoyed your comments about littering. We do have littering statutes and we do have littering fines. They're state fines. We could have town fines for littering. And we could, we could also ask our police chief to have his officers try to enforce littering laws a little bit more than they have. I think that the police have focused their interests on certain types of problems and overlooked others, even though there are statutes that prohibit that type of activity. So it, I think it would be a good thing if the council were to communicate with the police department and tell them that we would like to see our littering laws enforced. Particularly at this time, we are considering blight ordinance. And we want to keep people from accumulating trash in their yards. I think we should keep the public advised that we don't, not only don't want them to accumulate trash in their yards, we don't want them to accumulate trash on our streets. And if we want Groton to be a better place, it has to be in a cleaner place, then we're going to have to enforce those rules. But as far as controlling plastic use, I think plastic has been, Eric Severide used to say, most problems come from solutions to other problems. And I think trying to control the use of plastic would create a lot of other problems and reverse some advances that we've made in technology. So I think that the best thing we can do is, as you suggested, is enforce littering on a local level, enforce littering rules, and perhaps use persuasiveness rather than legislative powers to try to convince people to be more careful, to return plastic bags to Big Y and to not use plastic straws, use paper straws. Those are things we can do, but I don't know that they're going to make a huge dent in the problem of our planet being coated with plastic.
Counselor Ober. And then we'll come back.
I was just going to mention, I think probably at our first meeting of the Groton Beautification Committee, this would probably be an excellent subject and something that we can probably have a group that would be interested in working on it with you and the council, and maybe make it a fun, fun project as we're trying to clean up Groton. So I think we can forge forward in that way, too.
Counselor Heath, did you want to add any last thoughts?
Sure. I mean, everybody's made good points. You can't ban everything. This is just Groton. I'm not trying to save the world. And we do have recycling, we have trash pickup, we've got all of these efforts, but there are still going to be people that are going to litter. So my thought is not to just create another law or increase fees, which may or may not work, but is there anything in Groton that we could do that would reduce the damage done by somebody who's going to throw something out the window of their car?
So, yes, Counselor Franco.
I think the thing is, we're dealing with plastic bag and plastic product reduction. And I think littering is a totally different topic. I think they're two separate issues. That's how I'm looking at it. I don't, I don't know. Because I think littering is like a community project that you have to educate people on and work on that and have cleanup days and things of that nature. The part about the plastic reduction and plastic bags, which I believe was what you originally had a passion about, that's why we're asking them to come before us to see what they can do to help mitigate that issue. So we had to find a scope for them to go back with and a timeline. And that's what we need, I think we should be doing today.
Okay, so why don't, it seems like consensus that nobody really is interested in creating a new ordinance. So perhaps we can ask them, maybe in three to six months, to come back and tell us what they think would be beneficial to do within the existing parameters of town ordinances with what we already have. If you could figure out what do you think would be the most effective means? If you could figure out what do you think would be the most effective means and then let us know and then the council can decide where we want to go with it. If we want to pursue what they offer to us, if we want to go a totally different way. Is that acceptable? So do you want three months, six months?
Six months, six.
Yes, please. Is that, is that acceptable?
Three, three is way too short.
Okay, so six months, so we know that. And then the scope would be working within existing ordinances, the sustainability plan, whatever we have on the books already without creating something new. And then if, we invite you back in six months to come before the cow again and you could tell us what you think is best and we'll take your advice and consult then. So does anyone else have anything they would like to say? Or did you want to say anything else?
I would just say, I would think of it more as, as giving you options rather than telling you what we think is best. So here's, here's some possible options that you could consider to try.
That would be great. We would appreciate that. We appreciate your expertise on this, so thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the guidance.
Okay, where are we? Counselor Franco, 5B, 153 slash 2018, Project Labor Agreement for Groton 2020 Project. And again, no formal action, this is a discussion item, but if you'd just like to introduce it for the public, please, the issue background?
Sure. The town of Groton is working on plans for building a new combined middle school as well as two new elementary schools as part of the Groton 2020 Plan. The council heard testimony concerning whether the construction, to construct these buildings, I mean, I'm sorry, to construct these schools utilizes project labor agreements. From the Connecticut General Assembly website, I'm not reading that, a project labor agreement, PLA, is a collective bargaining agreement that applies to a specific construction project and lasts only for the duration of the project. Essentially, it guarantees the project will use as much labor as possible.
Thank you. All right, so where we are is we're at the point where we're going to need to make a decision very shortly, what you want to do with this. We've been talking about this since May. We've had multiple presentations on this. And the most important thing in my mind is that we are building schools and that we get those schools built as efficiently as possible through no fault of our own. We are already a year behind on the middle school. I cannot in good conscience recommend doing anything else that is going to jeopardize delivering that middle school as quickly as possible. So I am opposed to even considering a PLA for the middle school. We have two elementary schools. We need to make a decision what we want to do with the two elementary schools. I met with the attorney and the manager today and we looked at many different facets of this. It's, it's not simple by any stretch of the imagination for everybody that's out here. This is not a simple decision. This is very complicated. One of the key things with project labor agreements is in the general statutes. And we as a council make a policy decision and that policy decision has to demonstrate publicly that what we are doing by entering into a PLA is in the best interest of the town. Okay? So for some reason, we have to do what's in the best interest. You, you have to stipulate very clearly and very publicly why you think a PLA is the best way to go. Having said that, we had quite a bit of discussion today and I'm not sure how we want to start this. So one of the selling points, I'm going to keep going for a couple of minutes, sorry, little monologue here. Now you know what it's like for my, for my students to have to listen to me all period. One of the selling points of a PLA was local labor, was minority employment, veterans employment, the local workers, right? That's the key thing. This is a state contract and Mr. Burt, you can correct me if I'm wrong. State contracts mandate that you have 25% small businesses and of this, 6.5% have to be minority. Is that, you can correct me on that. You have the numbers there.
That's correct. That's mandated by the Connecticut Commission on Human Rights. And just, you know, on the, based on the estimated contracts, that'd be about, oh, 11 and a half million to small businesses, about 770,000 to minority businesses of, if you, if it came out with the estimated cost.
And then the other thing, Mr. Burt found two local projects, a New London project and a project in Meriden that were done with PLAs. And he provided the breakdown of their percents as far as who was hired, where the work went. And in New London, residents from the greater New London area constitute a 15%.
Can I interrupt, say?
Yes, please.
These were the goals stated in there.
Oh, the goals, that's right, I'm sorry.
That's the goals, right.
Yeah, that's what all of these are, by the way. Thank you for pointing out, that's very important. It's, it's kind of, it's kind of like the pirate code. It's more line, guidelines, right? You can't force people to hire, especially if you can't find the people. So these were the guidelines for the New London PLA. Residents from greater New London, 15%, minority workers, 10%, female workers, 5%, and veterans, 5%. Meriden had local residents, 30%, so it's a little bit higher. Minority workers, 10%, female workers, 5%, and veterans, 5%. So that's part of the PLA from those two towns when they did their most recent construction project. Keep in mind, ours is a state project, so we have to have those minimum numbers that Mr. Burt gave you already. We can add to those minimum numbers if you want without doing a PLA. So then why would you do a PLA? The idea of apprentices, the apprenticeship program would be great. The whole idea with following the workers' compensation laws, which was just a big issue that you all saw in the paper, I'm sure. Retirement plans, as was pointed out to us, that money should go in the right spot. You can have these things without the PLA, you can have them with the PLA. I want to talk about the construction delays, if there would be construction delays. So if we decided, we passed something tonight and it went through town council on the fourth, which is our next meeting, could you kind of outline the time sequence for us, please?
Sure. And Rick, correct me if I get anything wrong. We have a more knowledgeable staff on here, on hand.
Yes.
But if the council chose to do PLAs, let's say on the two elementary schools, one or two of them, first we'd have to just update our agreement with the ONG. I don't see that being, that going to take much of any time on there. Just the only thing to keep in mind is generally if the cost of the project goes up, then their fees go up. For instance, if you had a 1% increase, writing out both elementaries together, estimated cost of 70, about $73 million, just under that. The, the construction manager at risk gets 1.5% of the cost of construction. So if you, so if we had the current estimates, they get about 1.1 million. So if you had a 1% cost increase and if the bids came back 1% over, the bigger deal is just the, the cost of the project itself. That'd be about 740,000 extra and then about 11,000 in fees for the construction manager. So really that all comes down to what, there's really no upfront cost, it all depends on what those bids come in at, it's based on that. And the town would negotiate the pre-hire agreements with the unions with direction to ONG to sign. We would, I've heard, you know, I've heard some people say two days, some people say two to three months to negotiate with our attorneys involved in reviewing it. I'd say about a month. I'd say about one month to that. And really the goal is to, I think our drop date for trying to get the bids out is December, so honestly I don't see it affecting that, getting the bids out. It really comes down to if we had to rebid, that would be where we'd run into real issues. If, if, let's say we bid out in December, it comes back a couple of months, the bids come in a couple of months later, if they were over, we'd have to come back for council for kind of, for action, let's say a month at, at the minimum. And then the rebid process, if we had to go out to rebid would be two to three months, you're talking a few months. And at that point, you're, you're bidding in the spring, which I would be worried about, a spring bid, you don't get the, usually the same kind of results or responsiveness because a lot of people have their projects lined up for the summer, so it's usually better to do it more like in the fall, December timeframe. But in terms of getting the bids out the first time, there, I don't see any issue with it.
The problem would be?
So it all comes down to how the bids come in.
Right, so if the, so the total value of the two elementary schools, if, if everyone, I don't know if you are all on the same page or not, I didn't, I have no idea if you're all on the same page with me or not. In my mind, I was like, we got to get that middle school built now, so let's look at the elementary schools. So that's a total of $73 million. So 1% of 73 million is getting you $730,000 for every 1% overage that we have. So even if the bids came back 1% higher, that's still money that's going to come out of the building itself.
And just to be fair, that could happen also, PLA or not, just, just to be fair.
Right, and I should probably stop talking now. What do you guys want to do? Seriously, we, we need to make a decision. We cannot keep putting this off any longer. We've been at this since May, right? We've been at this since May. And if, if you have any inkling of doing this, now's the time. We, we cannot keep saying, oh, maybe, 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 because then it's going to be like, you can't unless you really want to delay everything. So Counselor Obray and Counselor Franco?
Okay, I'd like to ask the question, when did we first go to a contract for the middle school?
Rick, what was the timeline?
Mr. Norris, I think is here, does he know the answer, Mr. Burt? Could you come up, please, if you know the answer? Wait till you get to the mic, please. Thank you.
I mean, the first contract with the architect was like November, December of last year and then early January, we brought the construction manager on. So the middle school is, you know, that's been moving along and we were actually ready to get through the detailed design phase of that school and then move on with the bids. Really the bids, if we're talking about elementary schools would come later.
I'm talking about the high school right now.
The middle school.
Middle school.
So did he, to answer your question, November of 17 is when they first wanted to contract?
Right. Well, my, my question was, and I apologize for interrupting, but my question was, at that time, you contracted with the company that's supposed to do the construction.
That's correct.
And then they, from there, will bring in subcar tractors or whatever is needed.
That, that's correct, that's correct. The delivery system is a construction manager at risk. They would hold all of the contracts for construction work.
Okay. Did this question come out back in November?
No, it did not, not from us, not to our knowledge.
Okay, and so was May the first time that the discussion came up?
First time we had it before us was in May.
So nothing happened between November and May? We didn't have anybody coming in and saying, this is what we want you to do, we want you to do it differently? You know, I'm trying to get a, I'm trying to get a timeline on it because now we have a lot of people sitting here with us that we've seen once before, but we hadn't seen before that.
Right.
Let me just, is that correct? Is May the first time? That's what I was recalling?
That's the first time and really the question was asked at that point, have we entered into agreements with the construction managers? We had with the middle school, we had not with the elementaries, but we were well into the art queue process, so we were just about to, to award those bids.
Okay, but somebody else asked something and I'll think of where I want to go next.
Okay, Counselor Franco and then Counselors of Perry.
My question is, we heard about this back in May, but we were under the impression that we weren't going to be voting on this, that things were already decided. So that's where I'm confused. So just like all of a sudden it pops back up on our agenda, you know, they were just here a couple of weeks ago and I'm like, I thought this was already taken care of and we had no say in the matter. So why is, why is this before us again?
This is actually a policy decision. I mean, it's not something the Public Works Department can do, it's not something that the town manager can do, it's something that the council has to do, it's a policy decision. We.
We were told that there was a general contractor already and he made the decisions.
No, that's incorrect. If you want a PLA, it's, it's a community, town council, our particular case, decision to say we want to enter into a PLA.
I think the confusion comes in, in May we were asked, have we entered or were we about to enter an agreement, which we were. We've never dealt with PLA. I think there was a confusion on all parts as to whether that would be prohibitive to moving forward. I think there was just general confusion. But then we were re-approached about, oh, there is, you know, maybe people realize, oh, there is time because we haven't actually bid it out, so that's why it's come back before the council.
Counselors of Perry?
Do we know what kind of a time differential we would expect if we were to switch to a PLA at this time versus the contractor that you've already been dealing with? Would we lose time or would we gain time?
Well, we don't change contractors per se.
I'm sorry?
I said we don't change contractors per se or construction managers, that remains the same. On, on the middle school, if we're talking middle school, we're, we're at a place in time that, that any delay would cause us to exceed the delivery date and cause us the difficulty.
Would you, would implementing the use of a PLA at this time cause a delay?
I, I believe so in the middle school, yes.
That's the first question and that, that in itself is, is a very concerning answer. The second question is, what's the cost differential by employing, implementing the use of a PLA?
There's, the cost differential are all shown in studies. Nobody's really shown or will admit to what any particular cost increase is. So what you have to do is you have to go to these various studies that have been done by universities and other labor groups. Some pros, some cons that show what, what costs are incurred on projects under a PLA and not under a PLA. The majority of them show cost increases.
Under a PLA?
Yes.
But you won't, no, excuse me for interrupting, you won't know that until there's a bid. The, the issue becomes, if the bids come in high, and as Mr. Burt said, they may come in high without a PLA, but if they come in high, the problem is you have to start the bid process all over and that's where you're going to get your extra delay.
Right, and that's, and that's correct, Madam Mayor. And we'd have to, if the bids come in high, we'd also have to look at value engineering of the buildings.
I interrupted, Counselors of Perry, go ahead.
I understand we're talking strictly about the middle school project and not about the elementary.
I gave my opinion, you can talk about whatever you would like to talk about.
No, no, but as we're addressing this issue now, it's just about the middle school. It's not, it doesn't pertain to the elementary schools?
It does pertain to the elementaries. I think, I think, I would strongly recommend not touching the middle school. I think that would be a disaster. So we're just talking elementary schools.
So the, the estimate that we just got, one, it would create more of a delay and two, it would be more expensive in all likelihood, is, applies to the middle, the elementary schools?
The elementary schools, again, it, the budget or, and the schedule is, is a year later. So if we look at timelines on the elementary school, we go out for bid October 2019 is, is the plan right now. There is time in there for some negotiation. Again, we're at a very close margin, so even a 1% increase in the budget or in the bids as they come back in puts us over the top on the budget. We look at, need to look at value engineering then and any additional cost comes out of the buildings, you know, or the site. So it's, it's really, to my mind, what the mayor said is, is pretty germane, that a lot of things that the union says they can do for us as part of a PLA can be done with the construction manager because he's managing the project, the projects, the same way, basically.
I, what I think we should decide upon first is, does anybody want to pursue a PLA for the middle school?
No.
No? Okay, so then the question becomes, you would like to?
Well, I, I'd like to speak on the topic.
Yes, please.
First and foremost, I, I came on the council well before, well, well after any, any of these decisions were made.
We all did.
But, that's right. Although I, I did serve in the legislature when, you know, we were.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
No problem.
I can't hear anything.
No problem, Counselor Obray. But I, I did serve in the legislature when the plan was coming into fruition and, so it's been a long timeline now and I know we've had plenty of time to deliberate on these issues, but, you know, it, based on the presentations that were given last week, it was very clear that there are a number of issues taking place with this constr-
of issues taking place with this construction project in terms of how people are communicating here within the town. And I think we're doing a great disservice to the taxpayers by really having these kind of eleventh-hour conversations about a topic that impacts people who work here. The fact of the matter is, there will be a large number of folks who will be readily available, who are union workers, who will be able to work on these projects. If I'm not mistaken, the gentleman who provided his presentation last week stated that there was a forty percent unemployment rate within his union, and much of that is local labor, folks already live here. I would much rather have dollars, especially for spending hundreds of millions of dollars on a project that is impacting our next generation. Those dollars need to stay within our town and our region. And I fear, as many folks had mentioned before, that there will be trucks driving in from Massachusetts and elsewhere that may not even be part of a union that will be taking those dollars out of state and spending it outside of our community. So I'd much rather have assurances in place that we vote on, not a committee that isn't elected by the public, but us, who are directly accountable to the voters and to the residents here. I'd much rather make that decision and at least have, even if it's a non-binding document, which, you know, the PLA is, and whereas the contract is the binding document, I'd much rather have a policy in place that states that we are committing to hiring minority workers, hiring women, hiring local organized labor. It's important, and I, you know, I'm not going to ask for your opinion on it, because it certainly doesn't matter, but I just, I really think in the future, we can make these eleventh-hour decisions, and we have to talk about this early on.
I agree, I agree. So just for clarification, Councilor Baumgartner, are you saying you would, you're interested in a PLA for the middle school?
I think we need to look into it. I'm not convinced that it's going to negatively impact. There's already been cost overruns, whether it's been in the planning phases, whether it's, so, I'm not convinced it's going to make that much of a difference.
Okay.
We haven't seen hard numbers to show, emailed to us that indicate that. So we're kind of operating out of emotion right now, whereas I'd much rather operate...
I beg to differ. Councilor Parker.
I hear what you're saying, I hear what everyone's saying, but on the same token, we're already behind on our project, because we did run into some technical issues where we had to have some decisions, not through us, but had decisions had to be made outside of our hold. We're already a year behind with this middle school. I can see us going ahead and doing what we're doing for the middle school and at least taking a look at doing a PLA for the elementary schools. That way, the business is still going, and we're still getting the local laborers on board. But, but, I also want to see it, the minorities percentage raised up, more women, I want a higher percentage than what the state's doing right now. Just for clarification, so that I see more minorities and women represented. I don't, forgive me, I don't see, I have, I have not seen that tonight. And where, there's businesses that are hiring, but there's a big sign on the road on one of those places, the local business here now. I'm not trying to make anger anyone, but I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the middle school, for our students. We need to go ahead with this project, it's already been delayed a little bit already. If we can work out an agreement about a PLA for the elementary schools, I would like to see that to move forward.
Councilor Atwater and then Councilor Schmidt.
I know there's been a lot of talk about helping local, not getting enough bids if you do PLAs and so on and so forth, but I will take issue with Councilor Baumgartner, that when we had the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the, I don't know whether it was the union lawyer or union rep or somebody, but he said that there was a forty percent availability, and I thought to myself, you know, unemployment, and I think in the state, certainly in the nation, is about four percent, and I don't think it's our position to provide jobs for the forty percent that can't go out and get a job in this, in this climate of low unemployment. I think we owe it to the whole town to do the best of what we can do on the project and not just to the union. And so I really, it really bothers me that there's forty percent unemployment with the union, and we're supposed to come in and give jobs, and so that's...
Councilor Schmidt.
I have two questions. I wanted to make sure, can the unions bid for the business if they're not, if we don't have a PLA?
Yes, that's correct. In fact, last time...
If they can still bid, it doesn't exclude them?
No, that's correct.
And then how do they determine that prices would escalate at a minimum of one percent with a PLA?
Those were obviously estimates. If something happens, if there was a one percent increase when the bids come back, those numbers just are estimates that show what happens. And as the mayor said, either union or non-union bids could come in higher.
Councilor Hede.
I'd also be opposed to, at the eleventh hour, enforcing a PLA on the middle school. When it comes to the elementary schools, I'm leaning towards Councilor Atwater's position of, we're in charge of making the best decision for the town. That being said, I think if there are ways, you've suggested, I believe, that there are ways that you can put in standards that are similar to PLA or, you know, something to that expectation when doing the middle schools, that you can accomplish some of the same goals without necessarily tying the hands of the contractor in advance.
So I'm going to go back to something I said earlier. Connecticut General Statute, Section thirty-one dash fifty-six B. We, as policymakers, have to determine that it is in the public's best interest to require such an agreement. So what is our rationale for doing a PLA? It's in the public's best interest, how? Is it in the public's best interest? If you want to do this, we have to be able to state that. And then we need to compare that to what we could achieve without a PLA. We need to, we need to look at this balanced, both sides, and go from there. So I think we need to direct our conversation now to that, because it sounds like some of you are interested in a PLA. So what is the public's interest if we require this? Councilor Zepari.
You know, I thought Councilor Baumgartner's comments were enlightening, or at least reminding us of some advantage to the PLA, and that is, it would employ local labor. Now, I'm not so much concerned, I understand what Councilor Atwater said, and I sympathize with what he said, that forty percent unemployment in a particular group at a time when the unemployment rate is four percent is not something we should worry about. But the use of local labor keeps money from Groton taxpayers in Groton, and that means that there will be more business in Groton, and there will be more development that spills down from this project in Groton. And it would probably be to the best interest of Groton to keep, to have a PLA. I personally think that it is too late at this time to use a PLA for the middle school, but I think we should consider it for the elementary school projects.
So, Mr. Burt, and if not perhaps the town attorney, can we include a provision for local labor if it's not a PLA?
Yes, I'm understanding.
Yes? Okay. So just so you know, you can get the local labor, you can add guidelines for minority and women in, yes, the attorney, would you like to come up, please?
Sure.
Thank you. We need you on mic, please, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm sorry, I meant to leave that to...
Yes.
And comment, and Councilor Baumgartner, just to be sure...
This is town attorney.
There was a statement that there's forty percent unemployment in the local labor unions, and I was struggling with that number. I didn't have an ability to check it, but I'd just like to check to be sure that that's the actual number and that it wasn't, I forget who mentioned that, was it really forty percent?
Forty percent of the Building Trades Council, which is fifteen unions, comprised of fifteen thousand workers. They don't all reside in Groton, some of the members are residing in Groton here tonight, but that is the number.
Where do they reside, sir?
Southeastern Connecticut.
Southeastern Connecticut, fifteen thousand people in the Building Trades Council, and there's forty percent unemployment in that group.
Yes.
Thank you. So...
But, yes, to your, to your point, or your question earlier, can certain things be written into the RFQ or whatever, or the bid proposals? Absolutely.
Councilor Ober. Oh, I'm sorry, I was to go to Councilor Franco, then Ober.
I don't know a lot about the union, but I was wondering, can a union member go work on a job that is not union? So if a union member is unemployed and we build a school, and we find a contractor, and they put out ads to hire people, can union people work on those jobs?
I don't, I don't want to answer that. I don't know if there are any rules in their membership, I don't know.
So a union worker cannot work on a non-union job?
Being part of a union is all about...
Excuse me, if you wish to address, could you please come up so we can capture it for the tape, please? And you'll have to state your name again, Mr. Brothers, I believe, correct?
Keith Brothers, president of the United Building Trades Council. If you're a member of a local union, whatever trade it is, of the fifteen trades, when you're in that union, it's all about accruing your hours for pension and health, creating opportunity for your family. So to move to another contractor who's not part of the union or has a union agreement, that's something we don't have our members do, no.
We've got to go back to Councilor Ober and then Parker.
Explain to me why we can't have two bids, one from the union and one from an independent contractor for these jobs?
Well, first, just to note that it's not, it's not a union necessarily bidding on the job. If there's a PLA or if there's not, anybody can bid on the jobs. Anybody can bid on them.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. So...
For example, I guess, for example, in the school construction in the last go-round, approximately thirty-five percent, I believe, of the workforce was union labor, and sixty-five percent was non-union labor, meaning people obviously belonging to the union halls and then non-union contractors. So one isn't exclusive of the other.
All right. When you start a project, you don't go to bid, you just say, this is what we have for money to do it? And they say, yeah, we can do it, or no, we can't?
Well, what happens is, there was a process, in this particular case, where we have to go to the state...
Can you speak up just a little bit?
In this process, for school construction, you have to come up with a grant request to the state. To do that, we went through the process of doing some conceptual design work to determine how big a building we are allowed, what the cost of that building may be, so you can put together the referendum. Once the referendum is passed, then you bring on the professional, construction manager, architect. The architect designs the building, you have this pot of money that was your original estimate, the architect then has to design the building within those parameters, plus meet all the state requirements for square footage, for cost per square foot, for all those sorts of things. So, you know, early on, it's relatively easy. You have six hundred and four students, say, in an elementary school. You're allowed by the state to have X amount of square feet per student, so that's a pretty straightforward part. Then you have a site. So what does a site cost to work on? And what is the estimate for that site cost? And those are things that the initial professionals came together, along with this large committee that was formed, to put the project together for the referendum. To get the money from the state, you then have to take that money, and you're allowed some reimbursement based on whether it's a new building in particular at the beginning or renovation. Then you, through the process, you actually hone those plans, and they become finer and finer and more and more detailed and more and more cost-related, but you still have that basic amount of money that you can't exceed, because the state's not going to allow you to exceed it. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, Councilor Ober.
When does somebody bid on it? That's what I'm asking.
Well, the way, the way the bid process works, then they go through the design process. We go through a schematic design, then we go through a detailed design process, then we create construction drawings and specifications. Once those are done, in our particular case, we have to get approval from the state saying it meets all the requirements, then they go out for bid, and then we get the bids in. So the bids come in at the end of the process, because if you don't do that, the contractors don't know what to bid on.
So I'm going to jump in for one second, please. So we are looking at December is when we're hoping to have the contracts awarded, correct?
Bid out.
Bid out by December.
Well, actually, no, actually, it's the middle school. Actually, the middle school is going out for bid in December. The elementary school is about to bid...
Going out to bid when?
In January. We'll get approval from the state. The elementary schools will probably go out in June, July, August of next year. But if we're determined, or if we decide to go forward with a PLA, we need to know that early on for the elementary schools, too, because all that information has to be included in the construction documents that go to the state.
Okay. I need clarification now.
Okay.
Because that's not what I was told earlier. Okay? So I was told that December was when the bids had to be in for the elementary schools. So now you're saying that the bids have to be in in June?
No, the bids for the elementary schools are...
When do we go out to bid? Let's go that way. When do we have to have everything ready to go and say, here are people bid on this project?
January for the...
January of twenty nineteen.
For the middle school.
For the elementary schools, is what I'm talking about, Mr. Norris.
The elementary schools are later that year, probably August or so.
So you said June, now you're saying August.
Well, June, July, August, when we get the plans ready to go and we get to that point where the design's complete.
Councilor Parker.
All right. Can I just jump in, jump in for one minute?
Sure.
Okay. If I'm understanding you correctly and what you're hearing, designs have to be, construction designs have to be made and approved by the state before we can go out to bid, hence why we're not going to probably bid until December, because the schematics aren't done yet, that they have to be approved by the state in order for us to bid, send out the bids, correct?
Correct.
He, since we just got approved for two new schools, two new elementary schools, they have to be designed, schematics have to be done, and sent back up to the state for them to review and approve, so that then by then, hence the June, July, August timeline is what he's saying, because they have to approve it, then they send it back and say, yes, you can put that out to bid. Is that what we're trying to say?
Right. To maybe clarify it a little bit, delivery for the middle school has always been June of twenty twenty. For the elementary schools, we were, we were kind of held back a little bit, waiting for the architect to come on, determine what, whether it was more efficient and cost-effective to build, to build new or renovate the existing middle schools as elementary schools. The state finally made a determination that we could build those schools new. So the delivery date for them is part of the schedule, it had been advertised from the beginnings of the project, was June, June, July, twenty twenty-one, and that's the schedule we're going to meet to deliver those two schools. So there was a year's difference. Originally, on the renovation process, if you renovated, you had to wait for the schools to be vacated before you could get in there and work.
We need to have shoveling ground in all three projects by October of nineteen, correct?
That's correct.
So then we can't be waiting until August to go out to bid, right?
Well, what's going to be done is, there's going to be an early package that allows us to put up a construction fence, look at the utilities where they are, so if the utilities have to be moved for the elementary schools before we can dig foundations, that work to establish the sites, so the school that's operating is separated from the construction site, which is in all of our interests for safety for the schools, students, and parents, that will be done before October of nineteen.
So that would be shoveling ground sufficient?
Yes, yes. We have to have a contract signed, is what the state's requirement is, and that kind of work.
You have to have a contract signed with who?
With, with a contractor.
By when? By when?
By October of 2019.
Counselor Parker needed to finish, then Counselor Heed.
Okay. Going back to the forty percent, Mr....
Brothers.
Brothers. Out of those fifteen unions...
Yes.
Out of those people, how many of them are rotten residents that are unemployed?
Rotten residents that are unemployed? I would say a hundred, eighty to a hundred.
Counselor Obray. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to go back to my question again.
Okay.
When we've gone through this whole process, and we've gotten to the point that it's ready to go out for bid, can it go out to both?
No.
We have to tell the state earlier that it's going to be union?
But can we...
I think the question is, does it go out to bid as a PLA or not a PLA? Is that, or can it be bid out as both?
What I'm saying is, can we say to the union, "Okay, tell us how you can do it," and then you say, we'll call them independents, you say to the independents, "How can you do it?" So that we get the best bid.
Respectfully, I don't think you can go through it in that manner, the manner I think that you would have to go through because putting out for PLA requires that you do make a finding that it's in the public interest in this instance. To go out to bid with PLA, you have to make that finding to pursue it, so...
Wouldn't the best price be the best thing for the town?
The best interest is set forth in the statutes, and there are a variety of criteria that are offered there for you to evaluate to make that decision. So once that decision, if you assume that decision is made, and bids, and you decide, "Yep, we want to do a PLA," and that agreement is negotiated, one of the things that, from a legal perspective, that I would just suggest is that there's some assurance that if, for example, the bids come in higher than you expect, and remember, one percent is seven hundred odd thousand dollars, three percent, you're talking over two million dollars. If the bids come in higher, or if you don't have enough bids, perhaps, you know, and you would have to set that number, you might want to include something that says, "Listen, this is what we can authorize the construction manager to enter into. He or she can enter into an agreement for PLA," but that there's an out in it, meaning if these bids don't come in or if this price doesn't come in, then we have the right to go ahead and rebid without a PLA. And that's been done in other instances. And we've looked at a contract, for example, in Stanford that had a specific out clause in it. So if a decision is made, if you go through these findings and you decide this is what we want to do, my advice would simply be to be sure that, when you authorize that PLA, to be sure that there's an opportunity to back out of it if it turns out that, you know, it didn't turn out the way that you had anticipated or hoped. And you can't necessarily anticipate or expect that, but this would at least provide the town with an ability to go and make that change.
And I would just say, on the fourteenth of August, we were provided with a handout that laid out the six possible public interest areas. One is the efficiency costs and direct economic benefits to the public entity, so it's a town. Second, the availability of a skilled workforce, the prevention of construction delays, safety and quality of the public works project, advancement of minority and women-owned businesses, and employment opportunities for the community. So by us saying we want a PLA, we have to demonstrate clearly that one of those six criteria will be met by us implementing a PLA, correct?
I think that's the most objective way to do it. The statement in the statute indicates that it is in your discretion, and it offers these as, you know, things that you can look at, factors that you can look at. I believe that because they're spelled out there, it makes sense to look at those because it provides you with some objective basis. You find it, or you don't find it, but at least there's some objectivity in those criteria.
Counselor Heed and then Franco.
So it's my understanding that if we were to do a PLA for the middle school, it delays things, probably not a good idea. Your recommendation is going to be no PLA for middle school, is that right?
Yes, we're at a point right now that we really need to proceed in anything or any bump in the road, if you want to call it that, would cause us some problem on delivering on time.
Gotcha. Well, I mean, I understand that. For the elementary school, then, it comes down to, we have the time. There could potentially be additional costs. What I understand from, you know, economic theory is there, if you have local employment, you have these multiplier effects that could potentially help the local economy. I like the idea of doing something that would, you know, have that result if it's measurable. I don't know if it is. But, so I guess it comes down to, is there any measurable difference on the quality of the work that comes out of, in any of these things that you've looked at where there's, you know, better construction, if that makes sense, by using union, non-union, having a PLA agreement, something to that effect?
That's what the PLA does. The PLA...
Excuse me, excuse me. Who are you directing your question to?
Honestly, any of the three, but one at a time.
Yes, please. Mr. Doris.
On the last project, we did not see a difference in there. I mean, a couple of issues were brought up by Counselor Baumgartner, asking about windows. That was a union shop. It could have very well been a non-union shop to put the windows in that we had difficulty with. Similarly, on the school, the elementary schools, we had a union shop that put topsoil in, it had glass in it. Again, that could have been a union shop, non-union shop. So we, during that project, there was not a discernible difference in the quality or the work practices or whatever the union versus the non-union, from my experience, being the project manager on those three projects.
Just to clarify, that was not my question. I didn't specify windows. I simply asked if there are any issues with the past building projects and who was responsible for those issues?
Right.
And how long it took to identify those issues, and if those issues could have been avoided by taking on a PLA, which no building project, school building project that Grotton has done in the past has utilized.
Mr. Brothers, did you want to add something to Counselor Heed's comment?
I just think you keep missing that the labor portion of the project you're building is a quarter of the price. You're paying the same for the two-by-four, you're paying the same for the yard of concrete, the comments that the two councils on the end have made about local people. You get what you pay for. I guess it's not always about the lowest responsible bidder. That's the state law, the state term we use in the industry. But if you look down the street at what's happened, someone almost died on that job. There were contractors that are removed from that job because of no workers' comp, from Texas, Massachusetts. I mean, that's the kind of games and rhetoric that you see on jobs where there is no labor agreements. But project labor agreement, it's all about the labor. We're not talking about, when you talk about overruns and things like that, that's really not what we're about. We don't, we're not in charge of, that's what the CM does. He takes care of how it's built, how it's designed. So that's approved by the building committee. But to do justice to the people that are behind me, which are some of the people in town, that live in the town, that work in the town, that send their kids to school here, that's what the labor agreement does.
He asked about quality, I believe? He asked about the quality of the project?
Sure. Well, quality of the project, multiplier effects. Yeah, I mean, he's answering.
You said down the street, the project down the street. What project do you recommend?
Sewer treatment project.
Not a town project, it's not a Grotton Town project. Okay.
Basically, it's not just about costs. That's what I was getting at.
Correct. Counselor Franco.
All right, I have a few little notes here I'd like to clarify. So Leanne, a PLA is just union. If it's not PLA, it can open to anybody. And union and non-union can both. Because I don't know if they clearly said it to you, okay? So you're telling me that in August 2019 for the elementary school, that's when you're going to put it out to bid, and then you're expecting 2010 to be shovel-ready with all projects and to have an answer on a bid? And have a contract?
We'll have an early package on the elementary schools.
What is an early package?
An early package is maybe a package that you go through to look at utilities, to install a fence, to separate the sites, so it's safe.
You had stated though...
And the bids will go out.
But you stated that in August, we're going to put it out to bid.
Yep.
And October, you said you're going to have a contract.
We'll have a contract for those small items. It'll be a separate package. It'll be divided into two separate work issues. So, I mean, you can, if you go out to bid, for example, you can go out to bid for the first thing that you need done or the most critical thing that you need done. You may not need to go out to bid, for example, for finishes. But typically, on these projects, we go out to bid for everything, and then we sign those contracts as necessary to complete the building in the order it needs to be completed.
All right, and then, so in the contract, we can actually put in there that we want local workforce in a requirement for, like, a certain area?
Which contract are you speaking of? You can do that in either one.
In either one.
PLA or non-PLA.
You can do it in both.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So I'm really about this timeline thing. Bids come back too high. You can't afford to pay it. We don't want to pay it. We don't want to spend an extra $2.4 million, whatever. How long does it take to turn it around and bid it again if we're waiting until August to bid the elementary schools?
Right. It could take another two to three months because when you get the costs in on the project...
Excuse me, gentleman in the back, could you please hold it down so we can hear the speakers? Thank you.
You look at it, it may require some redesign. It may require some changes and finishes, like we had to do in the previous schools. You know, some of the brick on the high school, and the front was supposed to be brick, ended up being what they called ground face block. So you need to look at those costs, and they would have to look at the design to see that that's done. So typically, it's a two-to-three-month period. You know, it may be a three-week bid period, but then the bids still have to come back. They have to be evaluated, they have to be consolidated. So it's not an overnight thing that you, the bids come in high, and you go right out the next day and rebid.
So worst-case scenario, we open it up for bids in August, things come back too high, we have to go for a second round of bidding. What's the best possible scenario that we could have a second round of bids come in?
Well, it's not... What the current schedule is, looking at the middle schools, I mean, the elementary schools, is right now, we have the ability to deliver them in late spring.
But how would I ask you? I ask you, what's the turnaround?
Well, it's going to say two months. I mean, I don't have a crystal ball. All I can do is estimate based on...
But we're getting a lot, it seems to be, we seem to be getting moving targets all the time. And it's getting just a touch frustrating for us trying to make policy decisions when the targets keep moving.
There has been schedules created. I mean, if we need to provide a schedule, I can work with the town manager and get the council the schedule that shows where we're working. Oh, are you, is the confusion on when we need answers on the PLA that was submitted in this document that we sent you today?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I wondered, Mayor, if the confusion, because you were working on a December date and an October date, came from a document that was distributed today and talked about when the information was needed, frankly, needed for purposes of the PLA. That referenced the October and December dates, and I think that may have gotten things off on a confusing point because I think it's that information. And then, Rick, you were saying you take that information, and then you move forward with things.
Right, right.
That they, to be able to coordinate items, to be able, I guess, to negotiate the PLA, you need that information.
Yes, and so for the elementary schools, for example, we provided the information that that would be, the PLA information would be, need to be completed by late December this year.
Late December of 18.
Yes, so then we can...
For the elementary schools.
For the elementary schools.
So you need a decision from us so that you can draft the PLA by December.
Yes, and have it completed so we can include that in our bid packages and stuff.
I thought originally.
Yeah.
Counselor Atwater and Ms. Perry.
I'm having a hard time understanding what timeline has to do with the elementary schools in a PLA. I mean, I just, I thought we were here to talk about PLA, not to talk about August of 2019. So if somebody could explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
The way they're linked in my head is that we keep hearing from people that PLA is going to come in a lot higher, right? People keep...
But that has nothing to do with the timeline.
It does. Because if it comes in too high, we have to rebid. And therefore, then your timeline gets backed out. That's why, that's why they're tied together in my head. Counselor Zepari.
A question for you is, are we being held up now because you're waiting for us to make a policy decision?
On the PLA, yes, if you need to make a policy decision at some point, so that...
No, no, I'm asking, is the project being held up?
No, no, the project's not being, they're not being held up.
Policy decision regarding PLA?
Yeah, no, sir. Because the design's going forward on both projects, and we're moving forward with that design as we would normally.
Because it seems like we have fallen behind.
No.
And I'm just wondering why.
Well...
Even in this evening, we went from hearing that you had to get contracts out for the elementary schools in June, and then all of a sudden, half an hour later, it was in August.
That's the return.
I'm sorry?
That's it. It would go out somewhere between June, July, and August.
Okay. But I'm very concerned that we do get this done in time to secure the state's commitment to subsidize this.
We already have that commitment, sir. We've been drawing down funds from the state.
No, but we have that commitment, but if we don't break ground for these projects by, what is it?
October 19.
Yes.
October 19. We lose...
That's correct.
And I am very concerned that we seem to be backing up. We're constantly backpedaling for some issue or other. And I, and I think it's imperative that we move forward expeditiously so that we don't lose the substantial subsidy that we've imposed by this day.
And that's certainly what we're doing. I mean, if you look at the middle school, we created a recovery schedule. So construction documents are done at the end of December this year. So the shovel will go in the ground March, maybe late February, March next year. So we more than meet the middle school criteria for October 31, 2019. The elementary schools, as I discussed earlier, we would go out for an early bid package so we could do work to separate those sites. And that will be done before October 31 next year, 2019. So we're, at this point, we're not in danger of losing anything with the state. If there's something untoward that happens, I mean, there's still the ability to go to the state and say, "We need an extension." We're not in a position to do that, nor do we foresee having to do that at this point. So your point is well-taken, and we are on track to meet those required dates.
I've had a request for recess, so we're going to break for a few minutes, and then we'll come right back. Okay, we're back from recess at 8:16. All right. I had a request to move this along. So I would just kind of like to just draw a poll here. What is everybody feeling right now? So if we could just go down the line, which, want to start on this end? Start on this end? Start on this end. What would you like to do?
Could you be specific as to what your poll?
Specific, do you want to work on, I think we're all agreed Specific, do you wanna, do you wanna work on, I think we're all agreed, we don't wanna do a PLA on the middle school, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the majority of us do not want a PLA on the middle school. So then the question becomes, do a majority of us want a PLA on the two elementary schools? So that's where we need to make, in my opinion, we need to make a decision tonight. That way, we can get this ball rolling. That way, we have the most time in case we need to rebid. So would you like to, what would you like to do?
I am concerned that if we went for the PLA for the elementary schools, and the bids came in high and we had to put out the rebid, we would lose enough time that we wouldn't make the deadlines.
So that's a no?
I'm afraid so. And my sympathy is generally very strongly pro-union. I think that the history of this country has been changed tremendously by the influence of the unions for the last, throughout the 20th century. And I think that we would not have been able to sustain our society had there not been a union movement in the United States. And for that reason, I feel badly about not supporting the PLA. But I also feel my first concern has to be to getting this project done on time. And I'm concerned that the PLA would, would cause a, potentially cause a delay in that.
Councilor Schmidt?
I agree with Joe Zepary.
Councilor Atwater?
I would say no on the PLA.
Councilor O'Bree?
I haven't made a decision.
Councilor Heed?
I think there's undeniable benefits having local. In terms of economic, what's it called? What did I call it? The multiplier effect. I think that's important, and it's a consideration that we should take. If we went forward with a PLA, I think you would have to have the out, as you said. But I could go without a PLA so long as we talk about options to, you know, have some local or some minority or some female, whatever it is that we would be accomplishing with the PLA, as long as we look at potential options, I'd be okay not having it.
So no? Yes? I don't know, I'm asking.
Neither no nor yes.
Okay, so you're no decision. Councilor Franco?
I think this is very hard. As I said back in May, we were under the, I was under the impression, I will only speak for myself, that this wasn't something we were going to have to be even dealing with, that this was out of our hands at the time. And then, two weeks ago, they came in front of us again, and I was, honestly, when I arrived that night, I was like surprised at everything that was going on. But I definitely wanna keep labor local. The thing that worries me is if there's only maybe 80 to 100 local workers, is that going to be enough to, I mean, I don't even know what the whole workforce will be. And is that gonna be enough to be even a percentage that's going to make an impact?
Do you put the percentage in the...
Excuse me, sir. You weren't recognized.
I was just answering the question.
You weren't recognized? Go ahead.
Only the American recognized.
So that's what concerns me. But I would definitely want to keep as many local workers as possible, and that's the biggest thing that I have. So I'm having a hard time with this one.
So no decision?
I have no decision.
Councilor Parker?
May I ask a question of Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Okay. If we did not do a PLA, can it be written in that we can have, or maybe this might be a two-part, both of them need to answer, I'm sorry. Mr. Brothers may need to answer this too. Can it be written in, besides minorities, besides the women and the vets, can it be written in that we want a local labor union in without a PLA? Can it be done? Or, I don't know.
Can you, can you include a provision that says, you know, there's a goal to have local labor as well? I don't see why not. I can't guarantee for you that that will happen, that there will be it. But what I can say is that, from your last go-round, you know, from your last go-round, you had union labor of roughly 35 percent. I can't speak to the local nature of those unions, but, at that time, but I don't, I don't have any reason to think that you can't put that in.
Would, could, could...
Did you want, do the people want to answer too?
Yes, I want them to answer too. Could you answer that?
Well, I think, Madam Mayor, thank you. The way I see it, we, earlier tonight, you talked about the littering, and that there was a fine for littering. You can make it 800,000, there's still gonna be people that litter. When you're talking about just writing these things and adding them to general statutes, to contracts, when the union labor's on a job, from my experience, because I am union labor, I'm a union she-met worker, we police ourselves. If we're not getting paid right, we're not afraid of a boss or afraid of, because we are a union, we make them make our check right. We make sure that our benefits are being paid as we go. Oftentimes, the non-union that come in, the regular labor doesn't know that they're not getting their retirement. They don't know that their health insurance isn't being paid for until far after the job is gone. So those are great goals. It's even harder for unions to keep those goals in mind, like the women, the veterans, it's hard to obtain those. But it's even harder for the non-union, because the people working, the people with their hands on the stuff, don't really know if they're getting paid properly until the job is over. So I mean, I don't know if that answered it. For me, for me, it was tough, because they didn't pay my benefits for eight years, and I had zero retirement after working on PLAs, not PLAs, on jobs that, we're talking about school jobs that I should have been paid for. So those, when we keep bringing up that we're gonna just write these additional laws, it's all about who's policing them. And I think that's a big difference between our labor and the opposite, is we really do police ourselves. I have nine employees that check their paycheck every week at Hillary Company and call the union hall and say, "Did Joe pay my benefits? Are they right?" That doesn't happen on the other side, and that's where I think that the loss happens.
Did that answer your question?
No. What I wanna know is if we wrote in a provision to make sure we had the local labor unions involved, a percentage of them to be involved on the project, as well as the other provisions, without having a PLA, and have, I don't know who would be the point of contact, well, contractor would be the point of contact, the general manager would have to make sure, ensure that you guys are paid. I wanted to see if we can go around without having a PLA, because if we're doing local people, we want as many as the Groton residents as we can. Because if I'm thinking correctly, you're saying that we have to hire out the whole entire local labor union? Is that what we're saying? Because then that's not just Groton residents. That's somebody else's...
Depends on what you put in the agreement. That's what the PLA does. Everything you're asking, and you're afraid of not being able to do what you want, what you don't want, and I think it's unfair to say that the PLA is gonna put you out to rebid. That's not the case either. I mean, that's what we're arguing, everybody's saying that at this council. I don't know what information you have, and you've got to show it again, but to be undecided...
Could you answer her question, please?
I'm sorry, that's not what I asked.
The only way you can do that is through an ordinance, responsible contract ordinance, where there are towns and cities that have those, where private apprenticeship require local hiring. That's not in the town.
But it can't be written into a contract? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Let's ask Attorney Duggan. Attorney Duggan?
I actually, I don't see a reason, as I sit here, maybe I'll stand corrected if I, when I go back and review things, but I don't see a reason why we couldn't say, you know, you want this much percentage of local labor. I mean, there's certainly a difference between setting goals and what happens in actuality, just like the state sets certain requirements or goals for small businesses, for minority-owned businesses, et cetera. And you have goals, and one of the things that I've always looked at when you have these types of goals, whether it's an affirmative action issue, whether it's an employment issue, whether it's something like this, is the issue comes down to, how are you trying to find it? Where are you advertising this? Where are you kind of casting your net to be sure that the folks who you want to try and attract at least are aware of it? We can't force people to submit a bid, but what we can do is be sure that they're aware of it and try to get out the word as best possible. So I think in those instances, if that's a preference for the council, that we could look for that. As I sit here, I don't see a reason why we, why we couldn't do that.
Okay, the sec, two-parter. Oh, fiddle faddle, I forgot it. I forgot it, never mind.
So are you a no, a yes, or a no decision?
No decision.
Councilor Bob Gardner?
So I'm a yes for the entire project for a multitude of reasons. First and foremost, yes, we have 4% unemployment rate nationwide, but the fact of the matter is southeastern Connecticut has not recovered the number of jobs that we had prior to the recession. We have not fully recovered those jobs. Everywhere else in the state has already exceeded those numbers. Everywhere else in New England has exceeded those numbers. But despite the increase of employment at Electric Boat, despite the anticipated growth that we'll be seeing as a result of that, whether it's building new housing or new businesses that will be associated with it, we still haven't fully recovered. So there are a large number of people who are still unemployed here. There are even a larger number of minority individuals who are unemployed in our corner of the state. And the bulk of that would be in Groton and New London, Norwich, and our communities that are directly surrounding us. Why should we send those dollars out of state when we can keep those dollars here? We're creating, you know, an economic development fund here that will provide assistance to businesses to come here. We have the ability to keep dollars here simply by hiring folks who live here. It's not rocket science. There will be a multiplier effect that will take place by moving forward with the PLA. The PLA will spell out what our goals will be about hiring local individuals, hiring veterans, hiring minorities, hiring women. We can raise those percentages. It's a document that will guide, our staff will be creating the contract, it will guide them to, to create the best contract for taxpayers. And yes, maybe it will be, you know, an additional percentage more, say, 1% or even 5% more than the current bid. But I'd much rather have assurances that the labor pool will be coming from here, and not only will that labor pool come from here, that they're protected, that they're going to be paid a prevailing wage, that they won't have issues with workers' compensation. Those are real issues that affect everyday working people here, and I think we'd be remiss to, I think, just simply ignore that. The other part too is, and I made a mention of staff and delays in the past, I, by no means was I singling out any individual, and I'd just like to correct myself in stating that, by no stretch of the imagination, as certainly our town manager, who came on board very recently, I know he was certainly a late arrival to this project as well, and for my time working with him, he's been a great resource in supplying accurate information, so I'd just like to state that for the record as well. But nonetheless, you know, E-WIB, for example, which is, you know, which is partnering with our, you know, community colleges and many groups throughout the region, have stated there are not enough positions to fill at EB, that are, there are not enough positions to fill at all of the, you know, the entire supply chain that exists around here. And there will be even more people needed to build homes for the folks who will be living here, to build the businesses that will become, be coming here because of that multiplier effect and spillover effect from the growth we'll be seeing down here. So I think now's the time to invest in our own people, the people who live here, the workers who will be standing out in the cold, the rain, the sunshine, will be building our schools on time and on budget, because I have no doubt that the folks who will be living here will ensure that those schools will be built to the best of their capabilities versus folks who may not even have, you know, a license plate that has our state on it.
Okay, so it's me. My main priority are the schools, getting those schools built. I want those schools built as soon as possible, and I want as much money as possible spent on what's in the schools. I don't want cost overruns, I don't want delays. We are already a year behind on the middle school, and to me, that's a big problem. The things that I value in a PLA, the local labor, the minorities, the women, the veterans, we can stipulate those in a non-PLA. When we go out to bid, we can put those into, I don't know the correct terminology, but it can be part of the RFP. So I am, I'm a no at this point. Where that leaves us is four no's, one yes, and four undecided. So we don't have a majority move forward. So this, this item isn't going anywhere right now. That doesn't mean it can't come back for further discussion, but there's nothing we can do tonight because we are split and we don't have the votes to move ahead with it. We had Councilor Heed and Councilor O'Bree that also wanted to speak.
Just clarification on my position. I'm a no on the middle school, and I'm either for a PLA or in favor of stipulations, as you said, for the elementary schools. I don't feel comfortable being down as an undecided. I wanna be clear on this. I definitely want not no for the middle school because of, as you said, the timeline, but for the elementary schools...
You're a yes for elementary schools?
Yes, or stipulations. I mean...
Pick one.
Well, if I have to pick one, pick the PLA.
So then we still don't have enough...
You still don't have it, but I just wanna be clear.
Councilor O'Bree?
Do you have enough for the middle schools?
We, we are not moving ahead with the PLA for the middle school. That was the majority opinion, yes.
Okay. I just wanna say that in our conversations tonight, I think unfortunately, we mixed apples and oranges, spent a lot of time talking about dates. So I'm gonna request that, I'm sure you have a spreadsheet with dates on it for all your projects. So I would like the council to have those, copies of them. Then we will have no questions. We will have it in black and white as to when things are gonna happen, and if you run into a delay, you can come back and tell us there's a delay, and then we can talk about it. And unfortunately, that took a lot of time from, away from things that we really needed to be talking about tonight, so that we had a clear understanding and a clear feeling about it. So I apologize to the people that are here tonight. This one told me I've talked about it enough, I should have an answer. But that's okay. And we will, but it can't really be tonight, because as I say, I think we just, we just mixed up too many things when we were trying to get some real straight answers, and we wandered off. So if we could have those, that information, then we'll take care of that part of it. And I just have to, I have to go back and look at some of the information that was sent to us that I didn't take the proper time with previously. And the one other question I have is, is there anybody's here tonight from the Builders' Association?
Yes, that's Mr. Brothers, right here, the gentleman next to you.
No, 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 no.
I'm the union guy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, no.
The ABC.
Nobody here from the Builders' Association.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilor Franco?
If you're building two schools, elementary schools at a price of like about $73 million on average, and not specific, how many employees will you have on site, like, working on this building? Like, what's the total number of people that you're looking at?
Is that for Rick?
Whoever might have an answer.
Well, it's hard to determine what the number is. We had, on the last project, we had 28 contracts on each school.
How many?
We had 28 contracts.
All right, so how many people?
They all were working at the same time. It would be difficult at this point to give you an exact number of how many workers would be on site at any particular time, because it's spread out.
Just on average, like...
300 total?
About 300, you think?
Yeah, maybe 300 total, maybe.
10% of that is 30.
Yeah.
50% of that is 400.
So if you're saying like, there's 300 grand total, that probably would work on both of the buildings combined? Or each building?
Right. Like Rick said, it could be a bigger site package, and that's a bigger crew, and it's gonna outwork, well, yeah, probably 300.
Did that answer your question, Councilor Franco?
So on a PLA, do you ask for, like, on average, what do people ask for local? What percentage?
Well, you heard the London's, it was 15%.
Did London ask for 15, Meriden ask for 30?
So you're saying you have about 80 to 100 Groton people that are unemployed at the moment? Is that the max you would have to be able to put on that job?
It's hard to say, but we can clearly meet that 80% goal, 300 max, so you're getting less than 50, 60 locals, so yes, we could meet the goal. But you're also looking at veterans, and like everybody has mentioned, the apprentice portion that State Rep Delacruz mentioned, all those other things, you know, minority contractors, which we have, and...
So if I was on the job, I would fit into different categories, though? One person, different categories?
Right, but you could, you've made great points about carving out certain percentages you want, people you wanna work on the job, women and, that's all stuff that can be incorporated into what you want. I mean, that's, that's what the town, that's what your job is, to create those percentages, but we do have the people. To answer your question, we do have the people to, that are local, to fit those percentages. Yes.
So do any of you, so Councilor O'Bree, Councilor Franco, Councilor Parker, do you have any further questions tonight? Because you were the three who were undecided.
One more question. If we go without the union, do you think that you're gonna be able to get most of the contractors from within the state?
Well, I would not term it without the union.
Right, I was gonna say that as well.
Well, however...
Well, it's without this PLA agreement, which is a pre-hire agreement. The union and the non-... The union and the non-union contractors will still bid on the project.
Okay, I guess then I'll try to...
So you can't, yeah, the contract is not with the union to do the work. The contract is with this pre-hire agreement that both union and non-union contractors have to comply with.
Do you think that you can have the majority of people that are working on these projects from Connecticut?
I don't know that. And I don't know that the unions can really tell you that at this particular time. I mean, it's a goal to do that, but, you know, unless you count noses when people are on the job, you don't know where they're all from.
Well, that's what we do. I mean, if you, I think we might want to do as well, before you meet again, is contact some of these towns that use PLAs. Town of Killingly, London choosing one, Meriden, I can get you a list of, you know, that's what you probably should do. Talk to the mate, the select people, and the town council people that have done these and seen them through fruition, and the goals were met and exceeded, and things like that. But, you know, the over-budget questions can be answered as well.
Attorney Duggan?
Perhaps to that point in dovetailing with what Mr. Brothers is stating is that, you know, that Public Act, that statute, talks about your obligation to find that it's in the public interest to utilize this arrangement. And there are a number of, again, factors that are spelled out in there, some of which I think are, can be pretty concrete. You know, I think you can perhaps, to make an informed decision, you may want to ensure that you have the data to support those factors, which, you know, may require some, some follow-up. But to make an informed decision and to make an objective decision, you know, I would encourage you to look at that again, to look at those factors, and consider what, what's the information that you really need to be able to make an informed decision.
So is there specific questions that you would like someone to provide answers to? Any of you three who are undecided? No?
No, I just want to review some information myself.
Okay. Did you have any specific questions, Counselor Parker or Counselor Franco?
I do.
Yes.
Going with, if, if there's the potential of going with the PLA, I'm still undecided. Having the union, the local people would be approximately 100. Where else would you get the rest of the people? Are they all within Connecticut?
I don't think we'd have to worry about it. There's only 300 people on the job total. We have plenty of availability locally. The job's not that big, $70 million, I mean, that's not, that's not a big, big project. With $700 million, it was a PLA like we're going to be doing in the shipyard at EB, then we have issued a percentage, but this, this job's not that big, you think, I wrote, $70 million, so that's, those percentages are pretty doable. And we do count noses.
Could you get us the numbers as to your membership and the breakdown as to where they, what towns they're from?
Sure.
And that sort of thing, please, thank you.
Which trades they're in?
Yes, and which trades they're in, because we may not need, I don't know, whatever.
100 in the same trade, just those two.
Right, right. We need 100 carpenters.
And that's why the language, the goal, the goal language reads, surrounding counties. So that's how it reads. But I don't think you'll have a problem with 30 people.
Well, we decide what the goal language says, so... Counselor Franco, did you have any other questions that you want them to dig up answers for?
No.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead. So we have the timeline requests from Counselor Obrey, from Mr. Norris. We have a request for hard numbers on union membership, what locals they're in. And then, anything else, Counselor Franco?
No, I'm also not right now.
Okay. Counselors of Perry, had a hand up.
The only thing I want is, could you send us each contact information if we have specific questions as we're considering this, that we can call you and ask?
Sure.
So your name and your phone number, and good times to call. So as we mold this over in our own minds.
Sure.
Counselor Parker, did you have a question? Mr. Burke?
I was just going to ask if there are any other, any direct questions, I go, that you compile the information for the answers and give it to me so I can pass out to everybody, so everybody has the same information.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Well, we have two items down on the agenda. We're going to be real midnight. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
For coming out this evening. Okay, who's? Counselor Heed, you are item 5C, 2018-225.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the job descrip...
Hold up, hold up.
12.
Sorry. Wait till it's quiet. Go ahead. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the job description for the Water Pollution Control Division Procurement and Logistics Assistant. I assume.
Move by, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schmidt. Mr. Schneider, would you like to tell us about this, please?
What I'd like to do is turn this over to Chris Long, who's the vision head for the Water Protection Control Board.
Thank you.
For the Water Protection Control Division of Public Works. He's also the one that would give anyone a tour of the place, so if you're interested, please see him. Chris?
So our current material control specialist has worked for the town for 33 years, Miss Sue Palmer, and she'll be retiring effective next Friday. So we will definitely miss her because she's one of those people behind the scenes that keeps everything going, always gets us the parts we need, works really hard, keeps us vendor relationships and whatnot. So what we are doing since she's been retired, she will be retiring, we've taken a look at the job description, which is a pretty small job description. Not too many folks have that description left in the department or in town anymore. And just really reevaluated what's going on and do, so we looked and determined that there's been quite a bit of accretion to duties over time, as well as just changes through the technology, changing in procedures. For example, we don't keep a lot of inventory on site anymore because it's just not cost-effective. But in order to do that, you have to have somebody available on a moment's notice when you need the parts, be doing the procurement. So what we're doing is, we took a thorough look at this, added those new duties in, took a look at the old duties, updated them for technology. You know, we're obviously not doing a lot of manual punch cards or those types of things anymore, so just trying to get it up to date. So what you have before you is an updated job description that takes into account, really, the biggest focus of that job is the procurement aspect, getting us the parts we need, when we need them, to make sure that everybody in this room and elsewhere throughout town can always flush when they need to, because that's the most important job we provide. And with that, I'm willing to answer whatever specific questions you may have.
Do any of you have questions? So the staff alternative recommendation is, one, approve the new job description and authorize the positions to be filled. Counselors of Perry.
I, I looked at the notes that you gave us. What are the big differences between the old job description and the present job description, the new job description?
So I would say there's two significant changes. First of all, some years ago, and predates me, the plan used to have both an administrative assistant and this material control specialist. The administrative assistant half went away, and the other half came up to Public Works and still does some assistance. What we're doing is, we're going to recapture the administrative portion back from Public Works, and that person will be helping us with everything from running our monthly water control, water pollution control authority meetings, minutes, agenda items, assisting with other, other administrative tasks that come through. We do a lot of responses to our citizens who may have a question about their bills, whether it's a user issue and overbilling, so assisting with that. So that's one portion of that, so that's the, some of the logistics portions of that. And that's a part of that accretion while we're moving it up. The second portion of that is really taking into account some of the things that have been done that weren't accounted for in the previous job description. Again, it was originally developed as more of an inventory control store room type person. And over time, it's really become the outreach to our vendors, whether it's a contractor, whether it's a parts provider, whether it's a machine repair shop. It's really our first person to go to and say, you know, I have this 30-year-old pump that just failed last week, as a matter of fact. Their parts aren't available anymore, and we need to get it fixed by the end of day. And that person, they spend the whole day finding those parts and shipping them in from Indiana or, in some cases, Germany in years past. So it's really that onsite ready-to-go person that does that procurement as well.
Now, your current employee in this position has been doing that, has been doing all of these functions that are accretion to the job description, is that right?
Yes.
So, and that person was a GMEA Level 7.
Right.
And you want this new job description, which is going to actually incorporate the job that was in reality being done by the GMEA 7, to have a rating of a GMEA 9, is that correct?
Yes.
What's the difference between a GMEA 7 and a GMEA 9?
I think at the top step is the only number I know offhand. It's, you mean salary for rate of pay, right? Is that what you're asking?
Also for, for criteria for hiring, what are the requirements? I saw the requirements that you listed here.
Right.
In, in your new job description, and they included, one of the ways to be considered would be to be a high school graduate with five years of experience.
Right.
And I'm just wondering, is a GMEA 9 supposed to have a higher level of education or bring more to the table?
I think we are certainly expecting a higher level of responsibility from the person being there. So of course, as you know, a lot of times with job descriptions, you wind up with the minimum requirements, but you're certainly going to look for somebody with, you know, something higher, you know, because you don't want to put yourself in your box, in a box that you can't fill.
I'm just wondering, and what did you say the difference in salary level was?
I think if I remember properly, that at this top step, the total difference based on a regular calendar year or work year was around $2,500 difference between the two.
$2,500 per year?
Yes.
Fair week.
But I'm not positive. I believe that's what it was.
How, how, how much of a range of error would you give yourself?
2,500 to 3,500.
Okay.
Mr. Burke?
I was just going to know, it's going to take about five years to get to that same one it's being paid now, so it'll take a while. The top level for a 7 is 2,985 per hour. I don't know if you know the top level for a 9, the rate, but this would start at 2,703. It wouldn't match the current salary until step five. So, and then there'd be two steps after that, though, eventually where it would go beyond. So it'll be a while for it, it'll save money for a few years.
Yeah, but the question is, is $2,500 a year the maximum difference?
Do you know the top rate for level 9?
I think it was a dollar more than what you said, John, for 7, or which number did you quote?
Level 7 top, Bob had just looked up, 2,985.
I think it was a dollar fifty more than that. So at 20, 80 hours, it came out to be around 3,000, I think, so 2,500, 3,000.
Are there any other questions?
You really think one person can do all this, huh?
Well, we hope so.
One person has done all this.
She has indeed.
Well, yeah, but I bet she came in some of it gradually.
It's as, over years, you know, we're definitely going to be losing a lot of, a lot of experience, and a lot of those network is really going to hurt us.
Any other questions? Okay, so they're asking us for Alternative 1. All those in favor of Alternative 1, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, some of them unanimously. Counselor Obrey, we are on to proposed blight ordinance revisions on page 18, please.
Yeah, which part would you like to have, since there's nothing more? Just... Proposed blight ordinance revisions to address town council concerns. On July 24th, 2018, the committee of the hall met in regular session and discussed the blight ordinance best practice association, associated with ramifications and potential revisions with staff from the Office of Planning and Development Services.
And the recommended action, if you look on page 19, it says staff is seeking direction on the proposed changes to the ordinance. So you want input on the three bullet points on the front?
Correct. And we did a little bit of research on those, and we prepared a memo, that referral for you, kind of addressing some of those issues and what we would recommend doing and not doing on those.
Great, thank you.
If you want, we can give a quick, short, and sweet?
Yes, please.
Okay. Fines payment for the code enforcement officer, Tom did a lot of research into this. That's not something municipalities of our size are really utilizing. We haven't collected any fines yet, as long as this program's been in place. That's something we would not recommend doing. We look for compliance, not handing out fines to people. Two, assisting physically or economically challenged citizens with blight remediation. We already do that for everyone. Tom reached out to Stoningtons, blight enforcement officer, although they have a provision in that, of that in their ordinance, they've never utilized it. We then start getting into items of asking people to prove that they have those, you know, physical or economically challenged issues. We don't need to do that because we will work with everyone. And besides, if there was something, American with Disabilities Act, there's a reasonable accommodation for us giving people a reasonable accommodation around our zoning regulations and other ordinances in town if they are a, what's the, the term I'm looking for, sorry? If they're a, I think, a protected population. So again, we would recommend, the way our regulations, our ordinance needs, reads now, I don't think we need to go into that particular issue. But we did put some language in the ordinance dealing with junk and debris, as well as some methodologies for collecting fines, and, I mean, putting the liens on the property and how we would do that. So we like that language, we're still working with the town attorney's office on it, but happy to answer any questions.
So, so to clarify, if we look on page 20, you struck 2A, 3F, and then you inserted all the underlined text, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that also is back on page 23, the underlined is inserted as well?
Correct.
Okay. So this is what you would want input on from us tonight, anything that is underlined or stricken from the original blight ordinance?
Agreed.
So does anybody have comment on the items they struck or inserted? Counselor Obrey?
I was wondering on number three, where you struck out persistent garbage and trash on the property, do you feel that's covered enough down when you put debris, materials, and you did mention garbage?
Yeah, so above that, and we just didn't number it, we have XX, you know, XX, so there's rubbish, broken glass, trash, refuse, debris, so it's much more spelled out.
Okay.
So we think there's a lot more detail, and so we struck out the one line because it was just short, and then we spelled it out much more below.
Now, I was wondering why you have at the end of it, which is in public view? That again raises the same question I had before. What's behind a house can be very important to some neighbors, depending on how the houses are set up. So why would you take that out?
So that toward looking for some direction?
Well, I'd like it back in.
Okay. Well, this, what's underlined is proposed language, so really what you want is to have which is in public view stricken.
No, no, I'm sorry, the other way around. I, I want it that if there's a problem in the backyard that you can't see from the front, but you have a complaint, that the backyard's going to be as important as the front.
So then you do want it stricken?
That would still be considered public view. If you could see it, and if you were filing a complaint, blight officer could come, and you invited them to their, to your backyard, and we could see it, that would be considered public view.
Okay, I understand.
That's how, that's how we currently do enforcement.
Yeah, but you have, but that's not been the practice, so I want to be real clear on, on this part of it. All right, let me just back up. What you have here with the lines under it are what you're proposing.
Correct. If it's stricken, we're proposing to remove that. So the only thing that we're proposing to remove is persisting... proposing to remove is persistent garbage of trash on the property. Everything that is underlined is new language.
Okay. Well, under the new language, I have a problem with which is in the public view. I don't know why that's needed.
Okay, well, Noah, I understand what you're looking for. How about we talk to the town attorney, and we get the right language to match what you're looking for?
Really?
Yeah.
I mean...
Because if you don't say which is in the public, how is that defined? So...
If you get a complaint about a property, and you go and you're looking at it, but you're saying, "Well, which is the practice now? Oh, it's in the backyard, so there's nothing I can do about it."
Well, right now, it's also what is in the backyard. Because if it's something that is a storage container, if it's, if there's trash in someone's backyard that's strewn all over the place, that's something we would file a blight complaint on.
You have not, though.
But it's also what has been considered blight and what hasn't been considered blight. That's why we have a much more, you know, boats, machinery, state of repair, that's not in the current language.
So, if I may, Mr. Zanderini, correct?
Yes.
As he said, if you are, if you call them, and you go into, the neighbor's complaining, and they go there, and they go in the neighbor's backyard, and they can see it from the neighbor's backyard, even if it's not visible from the street, if you can see it from your yard looking into their yard, that's considered public view?
That is. That's standard practice. That's what we use.
We had Councilor Franco and Heed that wanted to interject.
So, I'm just wondering, public view, like, if you have a fence up, but your yard, like, you're a hoarder in the backyard, a fence is fine, though, you can still be a hoarder?
I, you know...
Is that a public view?
Right now, the way most of our ordinance is written, especially how it is for unlicensed inoperable vehicles, and in that provision in the zoning resident, zoning regulations, it also caused...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you speak up just a little?
Sure, I'll bring this closer, sorry. In the zoning regulation, it also calls to piles of junk and debris, which is what we're attempting to refer to in the unlicensed inoperable vehicle sections. It does state in there that you could have an unlicensed vehicle if it's in the backyard and out of sight. So, if it's out of sight, the idea is it's not causing a public nuisance. If something is in sight, and it's, can be seen by the neighbors or across your property, that's a public nuisance. Maybe what you're talking about, if it's out of sight, it's out of mind. You can't, you can't see it, you don't know it's there, there's no complaints. So, but if there is a way to see it, if there is odors or something that would penetrate, that we could, I could come and, you know, put a thumb on, and we could say, yes, there's evidence of blight of a problem here, then we can move on enforcement on that.
And that would fall under the immediate threat to health, safety, or general welfare if there was, you know, if we know there are rats and rodents, okay? Even if there's a fence, and we can smell trash in someone's yard, that's something we can go and enforce. But if we can't see it, it does get a little more difficult. We're not flying drones around or helicopters.
No, I get it. I'm just saying, if you should, I'm just going on the in-public view as well. I was just clarifying some things, that's all.
Councilor Heed?
I guess a comment and a question. In the current one, it, letter F, persistent garbage or trash on the property, instead of saying, "In the public view," say, "on the property," and then it's just clear to everybody that it's on the property, and it doesn't have to be in anybody's view. So, then, the question, if a car is parked on the street in front of the house, is that, that, it's not on the property?
That's illegal, if it's unregistered.
If it's parked on a street...
Could be registered, but broken down, flat tires.
Right. If it's on the street, if it's broken down, that's in the public right-of-way. That car can be tagged by the police department with an orange tag, and it can be towed in 48 hours. But if it's on private property, there's a different set of regulations for that.
So, devil's advocate, if you did take out which is in the public view, does that hinder the enforcement of the rest of this in any way? Is there any downside to removing that from the proposed ordinance?
Can I ask?
Yes.
I just want to say, I think that's why they want to get the attorney's opinion, because sometimes you can make what seems innocuous change, and it can have some legal ramification. So, I just want to double check. We can get that answer right away and have that figured out.
Well, I feel that it needs to be there.
Right.
Yeah. Going back to when you were talking, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I didn't know if anybody else had anything they wanted to add. Councilor Atwater's appearing.
I just wanted to comment on, Councilor Heed's on the property. As Councilor Franco said, what about a fence? If I have a fence in my backyard, and I've got something in there, tires or something, and you can't see it, but it's still on the property, I don't think we have the right to come in and violate that. So, when you say "on the property," that's, to me, that's going too far. If it's in public view, that's one thing, but if it's behind a fence, "on the property," I don't think that's the term we should use.
Councilor Zepari?
I'm concerned about unused boats and vehicles, unregistered vehicles being a blight. We live in a maritime community, and a lot of people restore boats. And the restoration of a boat can take years. And to say that they're blighting the neighborhood because they're restoring a boat in their yard, I think is a concern. There's an issue of trying to preserve a reasonable appearance to the neighborhood, and another issue of trying to preserve individual freedoms. And I think that if you could just come by and say, hey, that boat's not used, it's sitting in your yard for the last three years, I think that's kind of tough, because, as I say, the restoration of a boat, the fitting of pieces into a boat can take long periods of time, obtaining the hardware or the pieces, and also obtaining the money for that stuff. So, and I know people who have restored boats, and I'd hate to think that in Groton, we're going to say you can't restore boats in your yard anymore.
No, I think the way this is written, if you read it the way it's written, it says junk comprised of equipment such as automobiles, boats, recreation vehicles. So, when it's read like that, it's a junk boat that's just sitting there rotting. If someone's working on it, maybe it is registered, or if they're clearly restoring it, that's a case where maybe they get a letter, and they invite me over, and they show me what they're doing. Okay, it's not junk. You're working towards getting this boat in the water. So, just so that's fine.
We're making an ordinance that sets out in writing what limitations are, but then we're counting on the judgment of the enforcement officer to interpret that in such a way as to be kind or adjust it. And we may have that confidence in you individually, but you may have a heart attack next week, and we have to get someone else to take that job, and he may feel that, well, he's now got some power, and he's going to exercise that power. I'm just concerned about that particular aspect. I'm also concerned that we mentioned about, you described shrubs and grass on number H, shrubs, hedges, grass, plants, weeds, or other vegetation that have been left to grow in unkempt manner. That's a very vague description now. When we first discussed this, we were talking about grass that was more than two feet high on the yard. Now, that's no longer in there. It's just a, it's left to interpretation of the person who's enforcing the law.
Letter H is exactly how it's written today. Nothing has changed on that section.
Well, I think when we talked about it, we were talking about the two-year limit.
And that's our, that's the general policy that we utilize? That's been the standard? That's how we've always enforced it?
Well, if that's the standard, why didn't we put it in the ordinance?
May I interject? If you look at D, if you're concerned about the shrubs and the grass plants, D addresses that when you're talking about naturalized areas. So, I don't know if your mind was going to what happened in New London with the woman from the arboretum, her yard, where she had it naturalized, and people were filing complaints against her when she was actually doing what was, like, scientifically proven for that particular grass. So, D addresses that issue as far as the naturalized plants? Is that what you were going?
No, I was looking for criteria that we ask the enforcement officer to enforce. What we're saying is, H is very vague.
And then when you look at letter I, that actually states no greater than two feet.
Page 21...
Where's H?
So, there's the H letter I.
Page 21 is on, page 21 is H, and then I.
Yeah, I see that, yeah. So, is I a modification of H, or is it in a...
Neither of those are modifications. They're as the ordinance is written now. The only modifications are either stricken or underlined.
Yeah. No, but I mean, because by modification, I mean, like, an adjective to change the meaning of H.
Modifier.
Yeah.
No, because one is for grass, and one is for shrubs, hedges, plants, weeds, grass. So, it's, whether it's unkempt or not, it's for the grass specifically. It's for, that is considered the yard specifically, whether it's two feet in tall. It's a blight situation.
There are other things that I think that, my own feeling is that this could cause some bad feeling, some of the way this could be administered. This could be administered beautifully, but another way it could be administered could be disastrous. I think, my own feeling is, I think that we should put a term on this, so that the council has to look at it again, and to see if we have, it needs to be revamped. And I'd say that this would be, this ordinance should expire in five years, with the intent that the council reconsider the provisions of this ordinance.
Okay, so we've had...
So, I would make a motion to modify, to amend the recommends, to insert a clause that this ordinance is effective for the next five years, with the expectation that it be reexamined and reaffirmed or modified.
Mr. Burden, is that what we're looking for this evening? Are we looking for formal amendments to this?
Having a term on it, on an ordinance.
Okay. So, then, you're looking for legal opinions on two things, Councilor Overy's concern and Councilor Zepari's concern about sunsetting the ordinance?
Right. Just for clarification, this ordinance has been in place now for five years. We've tried to enforce it in a way that was fair, and I think when the original council adopted this, they wanted to make sure that it wasn't too overarching, and that it wasn't misused. We haven't had, only recently, we've had more blight complaints coming up. I think the way the ordinance is written now, it works well. Again, as Tom had stated, the only areas that are, we're proposing any changes at their direction of the council are the underlined or stricken through sections. Everything else has existed as it's been for five years.
So, are there any other areas of concern that any other counselors had at this point? Because that's what Mr. Reiner was looking for, our input. Yes.
Me? Oh, okay. You know, we have that situation in Mystic that we've had a lot of talk about. And I went over and looked at that property, and saw what the gentleman was upset about. And quite honestly, when I came down the street, I thought somebody was doing construction. And when I realized that that was actually the neighbor's container that was sitting there, basically in his front yard. In a case like that, couldn't you, is there any provision that would allow you to ask them to put up a fence, so that it's not so intrusive?
No, that container has a building permit as well.
I beg your pardon?
That container was issued a zoning and building permit. So, it's there legally.
For how long?
For a few years.
I beg your pardon?
It's been there for a few years.
Well, how long is the permit good for?
It's good once it's issued. It's issued. It's a zoning permit. It's not temporary.
That has a foundation?
It has a building permit. It was issued before I was here.
If something's permanent, you've got to have a foundation. It can't be, if it's sitting on a block, it's not permanent.
I would defer to the building official on that. I know that that issue has been researched. It's been looked at. I know a proper building permit was issued for that storage container. That's something that is allowed.
Do you suppose we could review that permit?
Sure. It, I can tell you, we've looked at it a number of times, because we've had complaints in the time I've been here. I've met with the property.
No, I know you've put time into it, and I do appreciate that. But I also can understand that man's aggravation. It's a really unpleasant situation. And it just seems to me, since that container is not on a foundation, it's not a permanent fixture, and I think under that, you'd be hard pressed to have a long-term permit.
Are there any other concerns with the blight ordinance that you would like Mr. Reiner to address? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Reiner is here for 5E, which is Councilor Atwater, on page 25.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution scheduling a public hearing for October 2nd, 2018, to change the effective date of ordinance number 286, designating the planning commission as the planning and zoning commission for the town of Groton, and abolishing the zoning commission from January 4, 2019, to July 31, 2019. I so moved.
Moved by Atwater and second to advise of Harry. You're up.
Okay. We need six more months. So, very quickly, when we, when this first went through the last town council, we'd estimated that it might take longer than the date that they had picked, which was that January 4, 2019. And they had said, well, if it looks like it's going to take more time, come back and amend the ordinance. And that's really what we're requesting. We think we'll be done writing the regulations come December or January. The public hearing process, we've been doing a lot of the public outreach throughout the process, but a lot of the things we've been doing public outreach on, we've been just talking to people about what we're going to do. Now, the regulations, we have a draft zoning map. There are things for people to look at. We have more regulations for people to look at. We just want to make sure that we don't short ourselves on time.
Any comments or concerns?
And then on top of that, there's also the required notification to DEP. It's a 90-day notification, so it's, so sorry. There's a requirement for a 90-day notification to DEP as well. So, that's a three-month notice to get their comments. So, it pushes the public hearing out.
Okay. Comments or concerns? Councilor Overy?
I would just say that, you know, I know how hard you've been working on this, and I would certainly have no problem. It's a difficult situation, a difficult meshing together, and I think we should have the amount of time that's needed, and we have a great deal of faith in what you're doing.
Thank you. And, you know, we really have to thank the zoning commission. They've been meeting many times, twice a month or more, to get through these regulations, when before, they were mostly meeting once a month. And they've been putting a lot of hard work into this, as well as staff. But we've been going full blazes on this. We just want to have a little bit of extra time.
Councilor Bunker?
So, again, thank you for taking the time to work on this, and most certainly, waiting this long to speak. Now, the planning commission, would you say that outside of POCD, they have a heavier or smaller workload than the zoning commission, crafting the POCD?
Oh, crafting the POCD is, that's generally done with the planning commission. So, you know, in this instance, we're asking the planning commission and zoning commission to be combined into a planning and zoning commission. A lot of what we're doing through the zoning regulation rewrite process, a lot of the special permits that normally would have gone to the zoning commission may not even be required anymore. So, it's, we're watching the functions of the zoning commission become less. Some things that would normally go to the planning commission may become administrative, but they're approving the majority of our site plans, our subdivisions. They have a heavy workload.
So, there will be, you know, continuity with the merger, tremendous continuity?
Yeah, so the planning commission members are staying the same. It's the zoning commission that will be abolished. And then at that point in time, I believe right now, we have two alternate spots open on the planning commission. And at that time, once these become merged, the council can look to either an outside group of members of the public or existing members of our zoning commission to pull into that new combined planning and zoning commission.
Seeing no further. Seeing no further discussion, um, we will vote on alternative one to schedule the public hearing for October 2nd, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So move unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Um, Councilor Schmidt, item five F, 2018, two twenty-two, fire pilot funds on page thirty-eight.
Yes, and this is on the pilot funds to the fire districts, and, um, we can, do you want me to itemize all of these amounts that are being paid?
No, I don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
So at the April tenth, 2018 Committee of the Whole meeting, the Quonic Bridge Fire District and Old Mystic Fire District provided updates to the council. The council has discussed requiring fire departments to provide an update to the council prior to releasing pilot funds from fiscal year ending 2019 budget.
All right, so, um, we're not looking for any formal action, but, go ahead, Mr. Bird, let you speak.
I'm just looking for some direction, because I've heard some kind of conflicting ideas, so, I, we've put the invite out a couple of times, it's been a while now, to the fire districts, a couple of them responded and came, um, one or two responded and turned downcoming, and some I just never heard from. Um, I'm, I'm gonna reach out to them again, but I wanted before that to get some more direction, or I should take a stronger approach.
Councilor Atwater?
I guess the first question I have is, is there anything legally that, that we can or cannot do as far as withholding the funds? I mean, do we have the authority to do that?
I believe so.
Okay.
Councilor Heath?
Um, as I understand it, the fire departments set up their own management structure in order for people to vote on it. They have to show up at a fire department meeting, they have to be informed enough to know what they're voting on, um, and we have to trust that they're managing the fire departments efficiently. Um, I still, I'm of the opinion that we should take the money, hire an outside consultant to say how these fire departments should be organized, how they should be spending their money, how should, they should be staffed. Uh, for example, we heard from one of the fire departments that, that, um, how they staff people, and I asked the question about a three, if they've considered a three platoon system, which is the standard for efficiently run fire departments, and they said no, uh, which tells me that maybe they're not really considering how you efficiently run a fire department to provide the service that we need at a price we're willing to pay. So it remains my opinion that, um, whether or not they buy into it, that we should spend the money on, um, a real study.
Councilor Franco?
If I'm correct, we have no control over any of these fire districts.
Correct, and the, the thing, let's say, one did turn downcoming to give information, and we wanted to have a study done, well, they don't have to cooperate or open their books in any way, we'd have no information, you know, it's already public knowledge.
They're completely...
And I would hate to, Quonic Bridge depends on this money, they've come in and showed good faith, the other ones that have come in, I would certainly wanna get the money too, that's the bulk of this money. Um, I talked to Mayor Hedrick about the city, and he said he was gonna give the fire chief about coming to give a presentation, so, once you take out those three, you don't have a lot of money left on the table.
And these are pilot funds, so this is money that's in lieu of tax. I mean, this isn't really our money, we're just the go-through.
Well, there's no set parameter on what it should be used for, I mean, because it's for us for not receiving taxes, it's, it's just the decision was made, a policy decision at some point in the past, to share with the fire departments, so it's really a policy decision.
But in all reality, they're independent from us, and we have no say over them, so I really don't think we should hold their feet to the fire on anything. That's my perspective. I mean, they don't have to talk to us, they don't have to answer us, answer to us as though we don't have to go and answer to them either, so, that's my opinion.
Councilor Schmidt?
It's my understanding that these payments are, um, being done because we, uh, respect the fact that each one of these fire districts is responsible for certain, um, buildings and situations which are property of the town or the state, and so that these are reimbursements for their coverage of taking care of, and their responsibility of caring for that. It's, it's not to look into their affairs and, and make sure that they're being done properly, but to reimburse them for handling those situations when they have to.
I, I think the money should be dispersed to the fire districts.
I think it should be dispersed, yes, I agree.
It came from the state with the, with the purpose of getting it back to the fire districts. Councilor Zepari?
I think that the, the funds came from the state to, to relieve the taxpayers, uh, for, for the burden of, uh, covering protection to, um, properties that are not taxable. And the taxpayers have supported those, have provided for the needs of those fire departments through their, their taxes, and therefore, the fire departments are not naturally entitled to that money. That money is to relieve the taxpayer, not to give the fire departments extra money for their next cookout.
No.
Uh, so, I, 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 I don't think, you know, I think that they've approached us with an independent attitude, uh, and, and I think we should respect that independent attitude and leave them independent. Uh, we should not dispose, we should not distribute the funds to, uh, fire departments that, uh, don't wanna explain to us what they're doing with that money. Um, so I, I, I would, uh, recommend that we not do anything at this point.
Mr. Bird?
Just to note that these amounts are in their budgets, presumably, so if we do cut them out, eventually that will get passed on to the taxpayer, um, in their district, yeah.
And the, the taxpayers in these districts are taxpayers in the town, and they are supporting their fire departments through their fire district taxes. So by getting the money back to them for providing services to our buildings, um, you are reimbursing the taxpayer. They're, they're not having cookouts, you're, you're giving them the money back that is owed them for providing fire protection to all of us, sitting here as a matter of fact. Anyone else? Councilor Baumgartner?
So, so the update, um, that they'll be providing to the council, um, we can certainly ask any question to those districts and certainly about...
Well, that's part of, part of, certain ones would agree to come to give updates, like Quonic Bridge, for example, they're always, um, at the ready to come give an update. Certain ones wouldn't come in and give an update.
Um, for the record, what were the districts that refused?
Well, some I just never, well, um, some I just don't ever get a response back from, um, Mystic Fires, when they said, "You can come visit," some of them said, "Come visit, we're not coming to you."
That's fair. Thank you.
Councilor Oberg?
You know, I just wanna remind everybody, uh, not that long ago, we had a really serious situation with Quonic Bridge Fire Department. It wasn't being handled correctly, there were lots of problems. We ended up losing some good firemen, a fire station, and it was mostly because I, there was no oversight, none at all. And I, I don't think it's unreasonable to have them come in and have a conversation with us. Uh, it's a two-way street, and, um, I, I just don't understand why the opposition. It's not like we're doing any more than wanting to see what they're doing, encourage them, and then, you know, pass on these monies, but for them to just ignore us, uh, there have been two that were very good, I said something to the wrong one the other night, but, um, I mean, Quonic Bridge has been excellent, and is it, uh, Old Mystic?
Old Mystic.
Yeah, he's been great, but I don't know why, you know, why they think it's so difficult to just come in and say, you know, "This is what's going on." I mean, have they got something to hide?
Councilor Parker?
Can, can we step back a moment? This is state pilot funds, for them to take care of the buildings that are non-taxable. For instance, the building we are currently sitting in. So, since they do not receive that back in their taxes when they do tax the fire district tax, we have to, the state supplemented this so that they can get it back. We should not be holding it. We're a pass-through, so we should release it.
I concur. Um, anybody who hasn't spoken yet, Mr. Bird and then Councilor Halden?
I was just gonna make a suggestion. There is a referral out there that we were gonna address, because there's been a request, uh, from Quonic Bridge that they'd like a greater, more money, not only, not necessarily greater share of this, but some of the money that comes to us to go to them instead. We said we would eventually kind of relook at the policy, reaffirm it or else change it, but we could also address going forward, um, how we wanna handle updates and how we wanna handle disbursements, that could be part of a larger policy discussion, which we can invite some of those fire departments to sit in on those conversations.
Councilor Baumgartner?
If Groton didn't have fire districts, we wouldn't be having this dilemma. Um, those pilot funds would be coming directly to the general fund, and we wouldn't be distributing them directly to those fire districts. The reason why we are receiving these funds for those, um, specifically for those fire districts is because they're taxing districts just as much as Groton Long Point is, just as much as Groton City is, just as much as the town is as a whole. So if we had no districts whatsoever, that wouldn't be the dilemma. We get state pilot funding for lost tax revenue associated with having that direct property. So if we, for example, we have the colleges, that, those revenues, uh, that we would otherwise receive, uh, for, at, at that property, if it were, say, a for-profit institution or a, a business, or homes for, for that matter, um, you would be receiving tax revenue from, from that. But the whole notion that you would, um, that it's, you know, it goes to taking care of, you know, um, nonprofits or taking care of state properties is, it's, it's not accurate.
Actually, it is, uh, if there are fires, even on areas where there's no building for the state and it's open space, there, there have been a number of fires, and the fire department has had to go out and take care of those things. So it goes beyond that, and, uh, I think that they are entitled to it, we are given those funds. They're not for, um, you know, we keep part of them because we certainly provide so many services to every part of our community, and we have said that this amount is what should go to the fire districts, to handle their responsibilities, help handle them.
So, Mr. Bird, we have a referral out there for discussion of this?
Right.
Okay. So, you would like to have included, so the referral is going future, going to the future, right? But we need to decide what to do with this money that's $246,000 that we have right now.
At this point, if there's no direction given, I think I have to release the money because it's in the budget, and that's how, so, on record, direction is. So barring anything else tonight, and the money may have been released to Quonic Bridge and Old Mystic, I'm not sure offhand, because they did meet the obligation, but for future years, we could include it in discussions on the policy, what to do with it.
So, the money needs to be released at this point because these people budgeted for it? Yes?
My question is, if we get them here in front of us, what are we really gonna ask them? I mean, what are we gonna discuss with them? Because they really don't have to discuss anything with us, they don't have to share anything with us. That's the thing, they're independent from the town, they tax on their own. I mean, that's why you get, you get fire district taxes separate.
So, so what I would like, is there, is there a majority that, if, if we, how many want the money to be released? Okay.
With the caveat they come, come meet with us.
Not, that's not my caveat.
The, the question that comes to my mind on that, though, if I may, the question that comes to my mind is, if this money is owed to them, why has it paid to us to distribute it? Why isn't it simply paid to each of them?
Well, because the fire district...
Why are we the middle person on this?
Because you pay your fire district taxes to the town too. You don't, you don't pay directly to the fire district, you pay one lump sum, and then the town distributes it back out to the fire districts. This is the same thing, where the, where, as Julia, as Councilor Parker said, we're the pass-through.
It's a pass-through.
We're the pass-through. All right, so there's no, there, a majority has no objection to you releasing the funds?
Just a clarifying question, though, I mean, what, that is the one, the fire department represents a large public safety apparatus within our community. Why isn't it at all appropriate, at least once a year, where we're having conversations with them outside of budget season, um, or, um, why, why isn't it appropriate that we're getting an update from the districts about what's happening in the town as it relates to the fire departments?
I don't say that, I don't think anyone said it was inappropriate, I, I think that the majority of us are recognizing that we cannot force them to do anything because they're independent entities. We would, we would love the opportunity to sit down and discuss things, but because they are independent, we have no control over them. That would be like saying, "New London, get in here, we wanna talk to you." We can't, we can't control them. Mr. Bird?
Just mention, like, what, what Mystic, not Old Mystic, Mystic Fires said was, "Well, we have budget meetings, we have public meetings, why doesn't the council send a liaison to those, uh, as we're educating the public to learn about the budget and bring it back to the council?"
That's a good idea.
Absolutely.
We're probably all, between us, we're probably in each one of the districts.
All right, so we are on to five G, I think this is, are we at Councilor Zepari?
Last one, last question, uh, I know you've all said, okay, who determines how this is broken down? Is this the way it comes?
It's been that way for a number of years. It was a policy decision that, it's changed at various times, but for several years now, it's been just set at this amount.
And they're in the works for it.
It's just been stacked, it's just been carried forward.
Right.
Basically, just a, just a, a town policy.
For the, for the division?
You could certainly change it through the budget process, you could set it differently.
Well, if we ever get a, the, the one thing I'd like to talk with them about, a lot of people keep talking about it, but there doesn't seem to be any decision, is, are these fire districts involved in garbage or not?
Some are, some aren't.
And that's what, that's one of the things I wanted to talk with them about, you know, how do we come to a resolution on that, and we can't even talk to them about it?
Councilor Franco?
I have gone to the Quonic Bridge Fire District meeting, and I've had this discussion with them, because they don't provide trash, and there's a misconception in their, um, district that their taxpayers don't understand why either. So, there are reasons, and I mean, if, I can discuss that after with you, but there are reasons why.
I, I'm not saying that there aren't reasons why, but if we could have a discussion here, then the town could understand what's going on and not be saying to us, "How come I don't have garbage pick-up anymore?" I don't know the answer, because it, it was...
I discussed it a lot when I was out campaigning, so it was, it's a, it's a big topic that a lot of people wanna know about.
So that, that is an issue that is with the independence of the fire districts, and again, that's not subject to town council purview.
Right.
Well, it's gonna come back to us.
Five G, um, Councilor Zepari, did we leave off with you, I believe, on page thirty-nine?
Yes, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the updated lease agreements for thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty Central Avenue, and authorizing the town manager to execute, execute these agreements.
Second.
Moved by Zepari and seconded by Heath. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So moving unanimously. And back to Councilor Baumgartner for five H, town property sale, proportion of New Anks School Public Gardens. This is on page eighty-five, sorry. Last page.
We can skip through background?
Um, you could just make the motion.
All right, so I make a motion to recommend a resolution introducing the town property sale for a portion of the New Anks School Public Gardens property, setting the public hearing date of October 2nd, 2018, and referring the matter to the Planning Commission. So moved.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heath. I believe Mr. Bird provided the maps for us earlier.
Right, and that's New Anks Gardens up here, and, um, they're looking at a portion of buffer here. There has to be, though, a buffer, it won't be this entire piece, um, and I meant to bring this over, and forgot, but it's, it's a section of this right here. And we have two requests on, we have two requests out there we've discussed previously for neighbors of the New Anks Gardens wanting a piece per buffer. Um, the other one, I haven't heard from the owner in a while, they're, they're responsible for getting their, their title and everything, yeah, they're pretty much responsible for most of the cost, anything else we would do on the sale, but, um, the, the appraised value of this little piece, which is, uh, point zero nine of an acre, is eleven thousand seven hundred. We have some, a little bit of cost, we would wanna recoup the closing and advertising, that kind of thing, so I, I've thrown up there twelve thousand five hundred to recoup our costs. But the first thing is, it's gotta go to the Planning Commission for comment, they, and if they deny it, then it would take a larger... And if they deny it, then it would take a larger majority, I'm not sure offhand how many of the council, to approve it, but we have to have a public hearing as part of the process. So, and we have to notify, notice the paper twice, I think, for that.
All right, so we're just setting the public hearing date for this, then it has to go through the planning commission. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So moved unanimously. I don't believe there are any further agenda items. Is there other business, Mr. Burd? Is there other business, any councillors? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. All those in favor for adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We are adjourned at 9:39. Thank you.